Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock on the twentieth, right? No, nineteenth of October, 2021. Opening up our city council meeting in the briefing session portion. And welcome to everyone. We do have a quorum. However, at the moment, City Secretary note that Mr. Koontz is not here at the opening, so we're sure he will show up soon. Just a little bit of housekeeping. I'm going to modify the reports in city council. Normally, I go, then council members and city managers report. I'm going to modify that tonight in terms of city council member reports go first. City managers' report will go second. I will go third. There is a recognition of a city, a champion of the city that I will do. And then we will recess for ten minutes. And I mean, ten minutes. I want somebody from first responders to sound an alarm or a fire horn or something for ten minutes. We are going to recognize the city's 139th birthday. That's what the cupcakes are out there for. Okay? So we'll recognize the city's 139th birthday during the month of October. I'll say a little thing about that. Then we will reconvene and carry on from that point. So, going on with that, city manager, the floor is yours for the consent items.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. Good evening. On our consent agenda tonight, we have item 4A, which are our conservative minutes for June 15th, 2021, June 22nd, 2021, our special meeting on June 29th, our city council budget workshop, and June 30th, city council budget workshop. Item B, 4B, is our opioid litigation. The Texas Attorney General's Office sued Johnson &amp; Johnson, AmerisourceBergen, Cardinal Health, and McKesson in connection with their manufacturing and distribution of opioids. They have reached a settlement that provides payments to cities for opioid addiction. The city has been allocated $58,328. These funds that are received by the city must be used to support a wide variety of strategies to fight the opioid crisis. The settlement does not affect the multi-district litigation or claims made against the other vendors and that are still ongoing. The amounts allocated to the city are not subject to negotiation. However, there are additional funds that may be received through the healthcare region allocation, and there are grants that the city may also obtain from this opioid addiction.
So these are restricted funds?
Yes.
Will be, will be, will be separate funds in certain areas and in the city bank accounts? Have we thought of that?
I don't believe we've thought that far, but generally, when we have restricted funds, they're listed in our system as restricted funds. And once we get a little bit more details, we'll figure out and start to talk about the appropriation and educational process of what we'll be doing with the funds.
It's only like fifteen thousand?
It's fifteen thousand. It's not enough to create a whole new fund for.
Yeah, that's not the case.
So we'll just appropriate it, but we'll also make sure that we identify it as a restricted source in our fiscal books. Is that correct, Madam Finance Director?
Yes, ma'am. You are correct.
Let me, let me, are you done with that?
Yes, please, Jesus.
You dumped that? Let me interject something here. I didn't tell you about it. I didn't tell anybody else about it. So slap me or fire me, whatever. I contacted Fran Lucidas, President of Methodist Charlton Medical Center, and told her about our $58,000 and how it has to be used. And Methodist Charlton would be excited to partner with the city of Duncanville marketing and doing something about opioid addiction. I also contacted UT Southwestern. Ruben Escobar is the Vice President for Community and Corporate Affairs, and he called me back today and said UT Southwestern would be most happy to explore opportunities for the propagation of information resulting from this opioid settlement.
How do you decide how much to get one and how much to get two now?
Depends on how they want to participate. Depends on how they want to participate. But yeah, we can decide how much we want to work with them. They have to decide how much they want to work with us. It was, UT Southwestern is, "We got it. We understand it. We will be happy to explore things with you." Fran Lucidas, Methodist Charlton says, "We're in. What do you need us to do?" Okay, so there's, so...
More discussion to come.
More discussion to come. And I very carefully worded, you know, "Explore the opportunities for collaboration." Okay? So, thank you for that.
Perfect, perfect.
Slap.
No, there's no slapping. I attended a city manager...
Wait a minute, then. You were right.
Okay. I attended a city manager's briefing about the budget, and many of the cities were talking about these funds, and some of our best Southwest cities hadn't heard anything. And so I'm happy to see that we're being included because the question that come up is, was it only for specific cities? And some cities found out before we did, which was back in June, about this funding and what was available before I knew we had our allocation.
Do we see putting together a group within the staff to work on the mechanics of, we're working with potentially these two hospitals?
Absolutely. I see Assistant Chief Chase probably working with council and group of people to figure out what we need to do.
Methodist Charlton has worked with us and with the police department in the past for drug abuse when they've had, we've had certain events, not just the police open house, which was the first one year before last, but they had a booth, their chief pharmacist, their chief nursing officer, and president, both. All three plus pharmacists were here to educate people on drug abuse. So basically, from what I'm seeing, Greg, is that Methodist Charlton probably has a template that they've used for marketing these types of things already. They're kind of well on the way with their chief pharmacist and so forth. Bring that up.
Thank you. All right. Item 4C is the purchase of a Rubrik hardware and software. AFC director's here for this. We have other questions that I can't answer, but we currently utilize Rubrik for data backup, and the hardware device has reached the end of its life and end of support. The purchase will move us to a subscription-based plan that includes Evergreen hardware wherein the hardware used to power our backup data solution is replaced every three years free of charge. We currently budget annually for the maintenance and support of this device. The subscription plan will change this from an annual budgeted item to every three years and will be included in the IT replacement fund.
Very good. Any questions? Any further information, comments? Seeing none, let's move on to briefings and presentations. Item 2A, consider and deliberate whether or not to direct the Economic Development Corporation to initiate an online community survey of open green space and suggestions for the use and development of the Charles F. Ladd property or other undeveloped principal municipal real property. Economic Director, Mr. Garcia, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Mayor and Council, Gus Garcia with Managing Director for Development Services. Here today to talk to you about an issue, as you know, has been coming up recently. There is a piece of property that the city of Duncanville owns, which is identified as the Ladd property, which is located at 609 West Daniel Dale Drive. At the, several briefings in the past, we've looked at city-owned property, and the question has come up, what are we going to do with those properties? The council has asked the city manager to direct the economic development staff to come up with the highest and best use of this property. Through several discussions and meetings, the council has asked us to look at this property extensively. We've visited with many people in the community, as well as many of the staff, to come up what would be the use for it. It was, it was put on our agenda at the Economic Development Corporation, and we had a lot of input from the community. I think it was brought here as well, and there was a lot of input from the community. The EDC, the staff, has asked this council to give us some guidance and direction on what we should do. In that time, there has been discussion about the green space that this property offers the citizens of Duncanville. And so, by Councilmember Koontz's request, he's asked that a survey be conducted to ask the citizens of the community the following questions, and so I'll read them for the record. So this would be a survey, presumably an online survey or some sort of survey, whether we go by text or email, to make sure that we're capturing and not getting people answering twice or three times. I know this initiative has come up before, but these would be the questions. Number one, regarding the city-owned Ladd property at 609 West Daniel Road, are you in favor, opposed, or indifferent to commercial or residential development? That would be question one, as proposed by Councilmember Koontz. Number two, generally, are you in favor, opposed, or indifferent to commercial or residential development of undeveloped green spaces owned by the city of Duncanville? Number three, on a scale of one to 10, one being not important at all, 10 being major priority, how important is it to you that the city of Duncanville preserves undeveloped green spaces? Number four, are you in favor, opposed, or indifferent to a nature preserve located in the city of Duncanville? Number five, have you, in the last 12 months, visited a park or nature preserve outside the city of Duncanville? Name or park reserve? What city? Did you shop, eat, or make other purchases while visiting this city? And number six, the final question, please provide other thoughts you may have on the use of undeveloped green spaces owned by the city of Duncanville. So staff is seeking your guidance to direct, and the title of this is to consider deliberate, as you mentioned.
Well, I'll be the first to speak. I have strong objection to these questions. From a third-party neutralized, these are biased questions toward green space. Any professional surveyor creating questions in terms of this particular issue would look at those questions and say, "This is biased information." These are biased questions pointing toward green space and natural preserves versus commercial property redevelopment, economic development, commercial property, and prosperity and sustainability of the city. Those kinds of questions should be included as well. I also take strong objection to the use of the word indifferent. If you take a professional individual that does this for a living, they don't use the term indifferent. You can be in favor, you can be opposed, or you can be neutral, but not indifferent. And I come with this in terms of my background, working on my doctoral work, and going through statistics and doctoral statistics, and creating surveys, and looking at Likert scales. These to me are objectionable. Now, I don't have a problem with the survey itself, if that's what council decides that we need to do. I recognize Mr. Koontz's desire to have input from our citizens because this is, this is the biggest piece of property we've got left in our city. That's fine. We've been working on this since I was on Economic Development Corporation Board in 2016, 17. What does that mean? It means that this is of such importance and such nature that it is difficult to make a decision by the city in terms of what to do with 42 acres. And we still have seven acres that are left in the Ladd name. And that's another issue that we have to address separately. Because what we're looking at is parcelling off that seven acres that still belong to the Ladd family, and most citizens have no clue that that is part of what our issue is. Until that is settled, because the Ladd still own that piece of property, the Ladd may still have input in terms of what may be done with their seven acres adjacent to what we have as our 42, that it has been deeded to the city as a gift. So I, as I said, I don't have a problem with the survey. And in fact, you know, we, TML, we were exposed to electronic types of surveys. In fact, we've done them at town halls, and we had consultants there. They give us a device, they ask a question, and we vote right then and there. Now, so there's, there's immediate response. We can do an online survey through social media, or we can do a town hall as well. Not both, because that takes staff time, it takes corporate, and it takes city resources to do both. So my inputs are, number one, I am not in favor of these questions as they are presently presented to us. I am not in favor of the use of the word indifferent. And somebody with a professional degree in creating survey language, being noted of or being advised of what the issue is, let's get some professional questions developed, rather than, no, no offense to Mr. Koontz, if you develop these independently by yourself, if with no background or education on the proper creation of these kinds of statements. Thank you. Mr. Harvey?
I just want to add, in terms of the questions, I looked at them, and from a purely financial perspective, I am just wondering if the people would be interested, given their level of commitment to developing the property, if they would be interested in providing resources via either a tax increase or reallocation of funds from existing parks in order to make this happen. I'm not so sure the level of intensity would be the same if questions along that perspective were presented.
Yeah, I think going back in time, I can't put a date on it, but the discussion of whether this land should be left as a preserve or a park has been discussed before, and city staff came to us with a dollar amount in terms of what it would take to maintain this property as park. And the numbers were so large that it was almost an immediate decision to say, "The city can't afford to leave this as a park unless the taxpayers want to," as you said, Mr. Harvey, "support the funds in order to leave this as a park." Because we can't leave it like some of our parks, there's a park up by the school, I can't remember the name of it. Some of our parks are not irrigated. To make this a preserve in terms of a true 42-acre park is going to require irrigation. You know, so that's an excellent point, Mr. Harvey, that taxpayers must understand that you can't just say that all of a sudden, "Let's call this the Ladd Park and leave it at that." It's got to be developed. It has to be excavated. It's got to be landscaped even further to make it a preserve. It has to be trails put in. It's got to, who knows? To go that far, there's going to be large amounts of money. Taxpayers need to understand that as well. So there's more questions that would have to go into. Mr. Cudarres?
Well, I'm wondering, and Bart may be able to help us on this. We keep saying "park," and I don't think that, coming from the standpoint of the citizens and Councilmember Koontz, that they've referred to this as a park. So my question is, where we've seen these types of nature trails throughout the metroplex or other, where, other places? And I'm sure you've seen that. Are they necessarily, or do they have to necessarily become part of our park system? I think you see them many different ways. Some are part of park systems. Some come as a part of a conservatory, where they're maintained by a separate third party. And some are done just through private ownership and open to the public. So there are many different ways you could do it. I've seen it all. I'm sure they've answered your question, but there's no right answer.
It does, because it's a starting point. Because, Mayor, you've said that this has been talked about before, and to the extent that we've got some pricing on it. But coming from the perspective of a nature preserve, and maybe not with all the other amenities that come with a park, have we, have we done any studies on that to determine what cost would be in maintaining it as a preserve versus a formal park with restrooms and pay parking? Because I don't think that's, and I won't put words into Councilmember Koontz's vision here, but I'm not, I'm not sure that's, I've heard that coming from the people that are proponents of the nature, keeping it natural.
Well, there are certainly different levels of maintenance for different parks. There are the highly manicured, such as your athletic ball fields. For nature preserves, typically, they're left just as in their natural state for the most part. There will be some areas that would you have to maintain with the parking lots and areas adjacent to that. But for the most part, preserves are typically kept in their primarily natural state.
And last question, Mayor, if I could, briefly. Are there architects of some sort or designers of some sort that we can track down that have done, more on a natural preserve-type basis, done analysis? What, what would be the possibility of us bringing somebody in to do that for us? Because we see the public support for something less than a park and more of a nature preserve. So what's feasibility of, if we went that way, of finding somebody that could do a first draft of something that would fit in this area? And, you know, give us, give us that option at least, so we can look at the numbers again?
Well, in Bart's defense, it's been several years since any critical undertaking has been done to do what you're asking for. Many, many years. At least a good six, seven years since anybody even looked at what it would cost to just maintain it. It wasn't even designed right. It was just, if we leave it like it is, what is it going to cost to maintain it? And those were kinds of things. But I want, Mr. MacBurnett had a comment.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and turn to Mr. Garcia at the moment.
No, I don't want to interrupt the comments, but I do know that in asking for the survey, one of the things is going to the public after the survey questions have come out, if there is any survey questions, and coming up with the area plans. That's what the area plans were designed to do, is we had budgeted some monies for area plans in certain parts of the city. Once you had the area plans, then you could go out and do a survey of the community on which ones they liked. But you would have a better understanding of what it is you would want to do and those costs associated with those area plans, once you've identified what you want. So I think that's one of the options that we were proposing at one point, to address that question in particular.
But to piggyback on what you just said, Mr. Garcia, in terms of identifying what we want, what do we want? There probably somewhere, some people around this table are going to say, "We want commercial development." Other people around this table are going to say, "We don't want commercial development of those 42 acres. We want green space." However green space is termed or used or whatever, I don't really care, whether you call it a preserve or a park or a, who's it? It's a matter of, do we commercially develop this property, or do we leave this green space and do something else with it? And I think that's a decision that we can, we as a council should discuss and also get input from our citizens as well. But it's going to have to be a quantified decision and very objective, rather than subjective, saying, "It wouldn't it be pretty? Wouldn't it be nice?" So now, Mr. MacBurnett.
Thank you, Mayor. And what I do want to acknowledge is, we do have a asset. It's a natural asset. It's something that's, that's beautiful and that we could potentially take advantage of. You know, my dad and I came to the city manager several years ago and said, "Let's try to make this arboretum of the sound." And stuff, and what was the issue? Issue was funding, more than anything else. But the, but there is opportunity. There, there's, there are things to look at, and I don't think we should. I would also probably say, this would probably be a good topic that we have in our strategic planning as well. So, so maybe we can go in that direction and see if we can get some kind of consensus or something to move along.
And let's not forget that the deed requires 50% of the property be left in some sort of natural landscape as a park. So can we have mixed use? It's not the proper term of mixed use, but what we would have is one portion of it be commercial, business, maybe even possibly residential. But 50% of this land has to be left toward recreational use, as dictated to us by the, by the deed. So there's a possibility of having a hybrid, instead of taking all 42 acres and taking it all green space, taking those 50% and doing something else commercially with it. Mr. Koontz, Mr. Veracruz has his hand up, and then to you, sir.
I was just going to say, with the survey questions, there are, number one, that specifically identifies the Ladd property, but in questions two, three, and six, it says, "And develop green spaces." So are we talking just specifically about this area, or are we going to identify all the green spaces, whatever we do to questions?
That's a good question, because that's going to confuse, it makes the survey almost difficult to quantify in terms of response when you start throwing in all the green spaces left in the city versus, I think, what Mr. Koontz's desire is, is that this is specifically focused on the Ladd property. So now, Mr. Koontz. Yes, please.
So are we still talking about the survey? Because we've had a lot of discussion about property. So I just want to make sure before I make my comments that I'm not going off topic. So what are we talking about right now?
We're talking about the use of a survey and the language that you proposed for that survey.
Okay. And it is proposed survey language, so that's the idea of a proposition, is you present something and then it allows for modification. I'm not sure where I see a bias there, but I don't know if I agree with that. But it is proposed language, so everything that you've recommended, absolutely, I'll be certainly agreeable to modifying the language, making sure that it's not biased in any way. And it's evident that, that I'm, I'm in favor of having a nature preserve there, and it's quite evident that a large, significant portion of our residents are in favor of a nature preserve there. We've had many tours and hikes down into the property. We have lots of cleanups. KDB has done multiple cleanups there. Every, everyone who goes in there, at least who I've talked to, apparently, of course, I haven't talked to everyone, is in favor of keeping that land as it is and making it a preserve. Mayor, you brought up cost, and you brought this up. I've been, as you said, you said, "Exploring the opportunity for collaboration." You said that about other entity you talked to. So I've been exploring the opportunity for collaboration with the Audubon Society, Dallas Open Spaces, Texas Land Preserve, Texas Land Trust. And all these have programs and opportunities whereby the city wouldn't have to spend hardly a dime. And as far as costs, trails have been already started by citizens and, or at least cleared the trails that were already there, so the people could get in there. And so several preserves in the area, Windmill Hill in DeSoto, Timmaw Creek in Lancaster, and by the way, Duncanville's the only town in the area that doesn't have a nature preserve. The Cedar Ridge Preserve in Dallas, all of these are maintained by volunteers and, or managed by entities such as the Audubon Society. And so as far as costs, I'm not sure, again, what was looked at before, but there are opportunities there whereby it doesn't have to cost, it doesn't cost the city that, that much to maintain a natural area. But again, that might be something that we can, we can look at again. And as far as the proposed language of the deed itself, that, of course, there are all those restrictions there. The 49% or 51%, it says at least, primarily, the property has to be used in such a way. And so that could be anything from 51% all the way up to 100%, still includes that. And of course, there's other language in there that says that that property is meant primarily to be for the city of Duncanville, for the community. So once we start building something in there, it starts to limit or restrict who that, who might be able to use that property.
Mr. MacBurnett?
Thank you. I'd like to ask a question of our city attorney. When I hear that we have people out there building trails, when I hear that we have people going on tours and that kind of line, what kind of legality does that put us in danger?
City-owned property, unless you know of a known danger, if you have a duty to warrant of a known danger, you're not have a duty to make a statement, but there is liability attached. If it were a designated park, you have protection of the Texas Parks and Wildlife Code, which allows immunity for use of park.
If you have a city council member leading tours, what liability does that impose on the city?
It wouldn't make any difference. It's, it's, it's the premise liability. It's not liability attached to the behavior of anyone councilman. When a council member is actually going out there, they're a private citizen.
Okay. Well, going here around the table, I think what we will have, yeah, I see your hand, Mr. Koontz. I think what we have, we will have, in terms of my personal opinion, I'm one person that says, "I don't want that all 42 acres turned into a nature preserve." I can see it as mixed. I can see it as a hybrid. And so I think Mr. MacBurnett's suggestion, this be a topic for our strategic, what do we call it?
Retreat.
Retreat. That we, that we have enough time to talk about this without time imposition, forcing us into what we need to do. Because there's enough concern just voiced around the table. I'm not looking for, we're not going to certainly take a vote, but I think that there's enough concern around the table to say, "How much of this, what of, what do we do with this?" And I will say that I am not in favor of taking all 42 acres of this without some consideration of commercial development for the benefit of the city in terms of ad valorem taxes and sales taxes that can benefit the entire community, which is what the deed says as well, the community and the city of Duncanville. So those attributes in terms of being beneficial... So those attributes in terms of being beneficial to the city can take on many, many different forms. And I think that's where we need to really flesh this out and talk about it more at our strategic meeting that we have coming up later. Yes, Mr. Cooks.
Good evening, everyone. We've had some good conversations around surveys for a length of time now, and I still stay to the point that I said before, nothing against staff, nothing against Survey Monkey, but for an organization of our size, we don't, and for a decision that we have to make as a citizen, as a city, Survey Monkey is not the tool you use to get surveys from citizens. You use a professional organization that will go out and get that survey and gather that survey information, as any other major corporation will do as well, when you talk about getting surveyed and using that data to move forward. And then they would capture the questions that you were talking about on professional. And that's one of the reasons I asked last conversation about survey, for staff to give me numbers of how much a survey would cost the city. And that wasn't on a particular item, but that was over $20,000. And so if we're talking survey after survey after survey, at some point, the council needs to sit around the table and decide, how do we, how do we get with a company that will craft a survey that's short enough, that will give us the information, but it captured in these most important buckets that we're trying to capture, versus trying to piece it every time? And again, Survey Monkey is not the way to go with it, for sure. But I still say to us, if we're going to do it right, when we talk about going to our meeting and talking about putting in one of our plans, we just, that's just us giving our hypothetical, how it should look, how it should look for me, what I hear from this citizen, what I hear from this citizen. We need some of, we need some of our staff or to get us started and really talk about a, where we start with this plan, and not a 30-minute conversation. So that means to us that if we're going to put it on the plan, I don't want to just hear us just keep talking about it over and over again. I like to use all the information we would use, which would be the survey, which would be if it's a facilitator, or whether it be economic development, coming up with hearsome thoughts, and come up with a good plan from a council standpoint, that incorporates what we're looking for from a council and what our citizens are looking for. But I'll repeat the same thing, but Survey Monkey, based upon my experience of doing surveys, is not the way we need to go in making such an important decision of this and moving forward for our city. Thank you.
Mr. Contreras.
And Mark touched on something that reminds me. Rather than starting from scratch at the retreat to talk about this, I'm still pushing to try to have some type of a rough conceptual idea brought to us by Parks and Rec on the nature preserve. Now, I'm not saying that exclusive of what some people might want. And by the way, in all the information I've received, and from, at this table and personally, I've not seen anybody yet, in reference to the lab property, talk about wanting to have a nature reserve behind a chicken shop and a Family Dollar, and, you know, they don't want that behind that development. I haven't heard it yet. If anybody's heard that, I'd like to hear about it. So we have to be careful when we talk about the development part of this. I get the tax base and the financial side of this, but until we have a concept, we're going to walk into that retreat, starting from scratch. To Mark's point, we're going to have 30 minutes to basically rehash everything we're talking about today. I'd rather see some kind of a, any conceptual proposal, including the types you're referring to, that would bring tax dollars. But let's start with something in our hands, not just from scratch.
Well, what then it requires is Mr. Cooks provide all the information to the city manager for what he has gathered, talking to those different organizations, so that the city manager can then use that information, talking to staff, to bring what you're talking about, in terms of something for us to even consider. Now, one of the things that, when I talk mixed use, there have been other individuals that have come to, we have seen proposals laid on this table by potential developers that have shown us not mixed use, but $400,000 homes. So when you say that with those people that are on the backside of Timmaw Creek, not be happy with having a chicken place and a subway and a Family Dollar, doesn't have to be that way. There can be $400,000 homes in that location for whatever that other portion of that land is. And that would be up to a developer to bring to us and to say, "What do we, what's the best use of that property?" Now, I'm not in favor of Family Dollar backing up to those, to Timmaw Creek.
No, I didn't mean it that way.
Well, that's what you said, so I don't have a choice but to address that.
Sure, okay.
So I would, you know, if a developer can come in here and put up $400,000 homes and say, "I can put up X number of them on the land that's available, and I, as a developer, will still develop that property back there so that it flows well into those $400,000 homes on both sides of the creek, on the existing neighborhood and the future neighborhood." That's a possibility as well. So in terms of, Mr. Coons has said he has explored options with other organizations, said that the city wouldn't have to spend nearly a dime. Well, that information needs to be imparted in detail to the city manager, so the city manager can decide how to use that. And then we have, is there enough time between now and the retreat for the city manager and staff to create what we're talking about in terms of having some process that we can exercise due diligence and have a proper discussion? And my answer as to that is, I doubt it. I don't think we're going to have time between now and the retreat to explore those options professionally, in terms of getting monies from organizations and grants and so on and so forth. You know, at some point, we need to decide how and when to do this, and if it's not time for the retreat, then let's put it where it is the right time. And if we have to take a full hour for a briefing session and do one topic only, that's due diligence as well, because we're talking about the major, you know, this is the largest piece of property left in our city, and it's sitting on our shoulders. The mantle of responsibility for the execution of this development, however it goes, is sitting on this council.
To your point earlier, it's been sitting on council's shoulders for a number of years, if not decades. And so, starting wherever we start, whether we start at the retreat, which may be short time to get together what we'd like to have, or some point thereafter, we have to come equipped with information. And I'm still, again, a big fan of having some type of a concept of a nature trail, a nature reserve in conjunction with some other things. I mean, Mr. Garcia has talked in the past about having a place for food trucks, you know, put them along Daniel Dale, let people that are enjoying that place be able to go down there and eat off food trucks. There's a number of things that we can do, but we've got to have a concept, otherwise we're going to spend an hour, 30 minutes of that hour, doing what we're doing right now, and we have 30 minutes to make a big decision. I think we work better with something in front of us.
Well, the decision that then, that faces us properly, the proper decision in terms of, Mr. Garcia asking for guidance from this city council during this briefing session. I believe what I'm hearing is that the guidance from this city council to the city manager is that to do some type of professional assessment, to present to us so that we can assess what's the best use of this property. And it can be different iterations. It can be different iterations. It doesn't have, it can be, you know, here's a 400,000 iteration, here's a 50/50, here's a whatever, whatever, and let's leave it to a professional, but then we, at some point, are going to have to decide, where do we fund this puppy?
I think we still don't want, we still don't want to lose the thought of hearing from citizens from a professional manner, so we don't want, we want to hear from the citizen before we come up with what we're coming up with, or we can shape that in a form of financial, citizens, and our major decisions.
It comes down to a professional development of the right survey.
That's correct. I want to hear from the city manager. She's going to say something, I want to hear what she has to say on it.
Oh, Mr. Hager.
Since the question is asked in public and since I responded, I would recommend to you that you post the property, that it's under the ownership of the city, and it's not a city park, and anyone that enters, enters at their own risk, from a liability standpoint. It's not a park yet. If it were a park, I'd have less concern about it. But it's not a park, it's just property that you own, so you ought to really post it.
I was just going to say, you're advising that we do, we put up signs to that effect?
Yes, sir.
City manager?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Cooks.
I concur, and again, I believe that that property was given in 1998, and it's been utilized quite extensively up until now. Of course, we're having this conversation now, so the liability issue has come up. But it has been used publicly for quite some time without any kind of official designation, but I do concur that that would be a good idea.
I want to hear, Mayor, I want to hear from the city manager on this, please.
Mayor, Council, what I'd like to do and work with Mr. Garcia, I know he's been looking at a number of concepts as to, when you ask an open-ended question, you get an open-ended answer, and so I think we've got a phrase or questioning to just not say, "What would you like?", because that will not get us any farther than we've gotten over the last 20 years. So what I'd like to do is work with him to come up with at least a, based on the requirements, a concept that shows a, whatever the mix is, not 50/50, but 47/80, 800%, and give you some options, and then bring it to you first, and then we take it to the citizens to make sure this is what we want to frame as far as a question. This is not a short process, but I think he is prepared to do that, and then we can phrase some questions under it, as what you like and what you don't like, what you see those. That will then at least start us on a concept, because we still haven't come with a decision, is it a mixed use? Is it a whole use? And so if we come up with at least three scenarios that give you the required minimum, and then work our way up, and then some other options of what types of development, I think that would be a start. I would say that, even though it would be great to do this at the retreat, if you let us and give us the running marching artists now, we can move toward that process and then work on probably by the beginning of the year, because I want to do this right, because you're right, this is our biggest property, is we bring it back, and that's all we talk about in a facilitated discussion. Then we take that to our residents and ask for input. They may say, "You got it all wrong," and then we come back again, but at least we start with something again.
You took the words right out of my mouth in terms of, take, no, take the time you need to do it right before coming back to us. Do not feel that, coming away from this discussion around this table, that we have to have anything to talk about the retreat. I think what you've just articulated, in terms of what you understand the guidance from this council to be, is correct, and it's going to take time to do it right. Take whatever time you need to do that. Very good. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 2B. Chief, receive your presentation on the city of Duncanville's current loud and raucous noise ordinance, ordinance 1791, section 1, relating to citizen quality of life, and obtain direction for the possibility of revamping or amending the ordinance in the future.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple of meetings ago, I think one of the councilmen brought up the idea, in the context of a zoning issue, wanting to revisit our noise ordinance, so that's what we're going to try to get it on.
And you got like, three minutes? No?
We've only got a few slides, so I think I'm going to do it. So what I've done here is, real briefly, compared some major points of the noise ordinances of our city, of Cedar Hill, of DeSoto, and I'll come back to it, but on the next slide, the city of Lancaster as well. I believe copies have been made for each respective ordinance as well from each city, but really, all of these ordinances revolve around them being offensive to a reasonable person of normal sensibility. Now...
Sounds like a lawyer wrote it.
It's very vaguely written, because we all do have different perspectives, we have different sensibilities as human beings, and at different times of the day, something may annoy us, where maybe at some other time of the day it doesn't. So that's kind of what all these ordinances are based on. Now, you could base an ordinance or a law, and I'll show you where it has been done here in a moment, based on a very specific decibel reading, as far as noise goes. But none of our sister cities have done that. We haven't done that, and in the case of the Texas Penal Code, which is also a Class C misdemeanor, would come to our court as well, disorderly conduct, 4201, it shows that a noise is presumed to be unreasonable if the noise exceeds a decibel level of 85. So that is very specific, very specifically objective. So we have decibel readers, we have cell phones that we share amongst our patrol that have apps on them. We try to be budget-friendly. And, you know, when it came up not too long ago, we said, "Hey, let's, there's an app for that." So we try to look at both the ordinance, since it was brought up, and disorderly conduct. We can go either or. So our recommendation essentially is, we're good. We can use either or, goes to the same court, and, you know, there's a court case, Martinez versus State, that talks about a judgment, it gives some discretion. And so that's why those ordinances that we spoke about, that we have, as well as our sister cities, we think are good. Some considerations in applying subjectivity to the objective reasonable standard, volume, time of day, type of noise, and duration. So did that do it for you, Mayor?
Certainly did.
Any questions and give us some direction? Do we need to go any further at looking at this, or are we good?
One, if we had an ordinance that referred to specific decibel levels, would an app on the phone and a enhancement officer work in court?
Probably not.
We can get those calibrated.
Is there calibration they can? I think that Chief Levigny indicated that on his slide, that whatever decibel reader you have to, just like radar that the police department uses, needs to be calibrated, because it would be challenged in court.
Those decibel readings would be done at the point of origin of the sound, or from where the complaint is coming from?
Property line.
Property line. Okay, so if there's a resident that's complaining about noise, you'd measure it from that point?
85's pretty loud.
Yes, yes. I think they give examples of what that would be, the equivalent of an engine revving, a car engine being revved.
More like a jet engine taking off.
Okay.
It's pretty loud, it's pretty loud. It's a lot louder than you think it is.
Okay.
The ambient air noise, the Metroplex is about 56.
And I know from experience that a lot of times, the sound, the wind direction plays into this as well.
Atmospheric conditions. I know a lot about this, because they represent some cities that border the airport, and we get complaints all the time.
Sure. The part about reasonable sensibilities, when you send an officer out, I mean, it can be as subjective as an officer hears a certain type of music that, you go out, it's country western, and you think it's okay.
Sure, sure.
Somebody else may not go out there and be as...
That's not necessarily based on the officer's perspective, and we need the citizens' help here, because we need them to be witnesses, because a lot of times, when we get there, guess what? The music has been turned down. But we can still get something into court on their word, if they're willing to be a witness. We can make the report, or in some cases, such as, we've got a whole different ordinance for this, but barking dogs or even some of this, they can go directly to court and make a complaint. But we need the help of citizens on this.
And, you know, when we prosecute those cases over the years in municipal court, it's always usually long duration, time of day, the things that Chief Levigny did put up on his slide, that become the issues.
Now, I've personally received phone calls at home around 10 o'clock about my neighbors having a party, and the noise is really, really loud. What are you going to do about it? Well, I didn't feel like calling our police department, so I hopped in my pickup truck, and I said, "What's your address?" And I went over there, and I listened to what was being played, and it was salsa. And I called the citizen back, who was not next door, by the way, was across the street and three doors down from where the noise was. I said, "What's your objection?" "Well, I don't like salsa." I said, "Well, it's not quite 10 o'clock, and the ordinance says quiet time starts at 10 o'clock. Let's see if things quiet down after 10 o'clock." And the citizen said, "Well, okay." And sure enough, I did not intervene, I didn't make any phone calls to that residence, I didn't call the police department, but at 10:03, that music was down and off. So the answer... So the answer, Mr. Contreras, is, we don't have police cars going around listening, we will respond to a citizen complaint.
Do you understand that?
Yeah, Mr. McNabb.
I have a question for Chief and City Attorney. So we're set at 85. I mean, what's standard in the other cities? Or is 85 the standard?
85's the state law for disorderly conduct. In most cities, it is a reasonable person standard. And courts have accepted that, and like, well, you know, time of day, type of noise, you know, like, a lawnmower at 2 o'clock in the afternoon is probably expected in an urban area. 2 o'clock in the morning, probably not. And so, and then the ambient air noise drops down. And if we get into objective standard, I think you and the citizens are not going to be pleased with that, because it's relatively high.
Can we incorporate the 85 decibel limitation based on reference, not inclusion by in black and white in ours, in ours ordinance, do we?
No, that's a state law. 42.01 is a state law.
Right, that's what I'm saying, our ordinance does not specify 85.
No.
Right.
Ours is a more subjective standard based on reasonable person.
But we can use that state law.
You can use both.
So, yeah, so if I have, you know, the complaint that I've had recently is, there's a gentleman that's running a generator 24/7, and the police have gone out there and they measure it.
We could go the other way. If it's unreasonable, and it's objectively unreasonable, we could use that ordinance. Now, that ordinance has very specific times that it has to fall, that noise has to fall outside of. The disorderly conduct, it's at any time of day 85.
Is it electric?
We could certainly revisit that.
Decent.
I think it's a decent...
Yeah, because there are a lot, those are generally at the property line, right at 85, because the generator companies know what the standards are for that. We see a lot of those where there's oil and gas production, they have generators to run oil and gas pumping mechanisms and equipment, and we get a lot of complaints. And so in my outlying cities with those kinds of generators, and they're set at 85 at the property line. It doesn't mean that they're actually going, they may be going over, but they're supposed to be set at that.
In the best-case scenario, I'm sorry.
Contreras had a comment.
Well, just two quick ones. One, I still would like to see what some other cities outside of our neighboring cities have, where they've used decibel levels as a point of reference to where noise is accepted, whether it's music, or just loud noise, generators, and the like. So I certainly would like to see that. But then I also want to address at some point, what we're going to do now, until we have an adjustment in our ordinance, if we feel that there needs to be, what are we going to do right now about the complaints we're getting right now, to investigate and possibly prosecute?
The problem you're running into is, I need the citizen, because the police officer is out doing patrol, they get a call, either make contact with, I'm just going by, what officers tell me, they make contact with the noise producer, and either get some cooperation, or it's been going on for hours. Well, he or she cannot testify it's been going on for hours, they can only write a ticket for what they personally observed. So if they get there, and based on contact with the citizen, and they make that observation that that music's playing really too loud at 11 o'clock at night, they can write the citation. But I need the resident to come to court, to testify that it's gone on for a long time, that it's consistent, that it's keeping the kids up, or keeping me up, et cetera, to show that that's reasonable. You might that ticket today, we don't need to change your ordinance to write that ticket. It's, if you do the decibel level, then you take the decibel reading, if it's over 85, you write the ticket for disorderly conduct, and give it to them. That's the difference.
I know when we've gone out, we try to go out, we try to educate people.
Sure.
You know, education is the key. And if we can relay to somebody that we need their help to truly prosecute something like this, and keep in mind, the best-case scenario in these neighborhood complaints is that we make it work. We somehow make it work. Now, sometimes we can't, and we've got to rely on ordinances and state law. We want to try to make it work, because we're neighbors. And if that, if it gets unneighborly, then you're going to have bigger problems, but sometimes we do have to get that. Education's the key. And we try to do that when we go out and meet with people individually. And, you know, the more we're able to do that, and we can try to do it more globally with here within the city, if you will, and use some social media, and try to, you know, help people understand that we need them in order to prosecute really any case, but especially this one.
Thank you.
So in terms of the request, and what we have on our agenda, the possibility of revamping or amending of the ordinance, Mr. Contreras has asked for some more information to be done at City Council.
Yes.
Grab some of the seats.
Okay. We have got like, four and a half minutes left. Garcia, can you handle it?
This is missing me, and yes, I can.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Old library guilt.
I just had a heart attack.
Excuse me.
This is fair amount of...
Mayor, this is one of those items I don't think we should rush through for four minutes. If we need to come back and we can intervene, we need to do that. Four minutes for an item that we may have some discussion on is not acceptable.
I asked the question, I didn't say, "Do it." What do you want to do?
Completely up to council, whatever you want to do.
How long do you think this will take?
I have...
To do it what?
Three, oh, I have, I mean, slides, one, two, three slides. And so...
Let's do it later. Let's do it later, that's a building we need to talk about a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, so we will come back, we'll handle item 2C at some point, probably later in the city council meeting, after we get done with all the rest of our business. Okay? And we certainly do executive session after city council. So probably what we will do, a deference to our citizens and ourselves, we will do city council meeting, we will then do this briefing item, then we will go into executive session. We will close out an executive session. Agreeable?
Can you?
Absolutely. Mayor, can we take just a moment to introduce a new employee before we go out?
Sure.
Is that possible? We're very excited to introduce Jeremy Tennant. Jeremy is our Neighborhood Services Manager. And Mayor, we're so thankful to the council for giving us an opportunity to have someone over this Neighborhood Services. You've also allowed us to add a fifth Neighborhood Services option. So Jeremy?
Yes. Hello everyone, my name is Jeremy Tennant, it's a pleasure to meet you all, I look forward to working with each and every one of you all, but no time is short, so I'll make this short. I'm very happy to be here and work with you guys, have a good rest of the day.
And your phone number is?
I'm... Pretty small city hall. I'm here. Thank you, guys.
And I'll send out a bio on Mr. Tennant to you, so you'll know a little bit about his background.
Okay, so you all got the game plan, right? City council, reverse order of the reports, executive session at the very end, and Building 103, Wembley, before the very end.
Yes, sir.
Very good. We can move out.
Time, 6:58?
6:58.
I'd like to thank the citizens for allowing me also to attend TML. Got information back that I wanted to ask our city manager to talk about broadband, as well as Charter, who's our service here in Duncanville, and so you'll be seeing that on a future council meeting. And then the last one and a half minute, I'd ask you to join me in a minute of silence for General Colin Powell, who all we know has passed to this life, to his next life. So I'm going to take my one and a half minutes of silence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Contreras.
Excuse me, I'd just like to echo Councilmember McNabb's comments about the PIP program. For those of you that don't know about the program, I would ask you to get on our website, and you can read a little bit about it. I'd also like to commend Betty Dunn, who leads up the program. This year, we did eight houses, I believe, over two weekends, and there was a lot of community involvement, as well as several churches being represented, including, of course, First Methodist. And I learned this past, this past opportunity that we had to work on houses, that even when you mess up, you can't get fired. So I'm still, I'm still on board, even though I spilled a little paint. But it is really worthwhile, and these families are very happy to see that this community has so many people that reach out and are willing to help. So if you haven't had a chance to talk to anybody about it, we'd be glad to talk to you, or you can go online and see what that program's all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member reports? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move to the mayor's report. The first item that I have is, usually we try to give you information with a definitive date of something going to happen, or a time, actually. This is November the 13th, if you mark it on your calendars. The City of Duncanville is going to be honored by Southern Methodist University at a home football game against the University of Central Florida. We staff have been working with SMU, with their general manager of marketing and sales with this honor, they contacted us, we did not initiate this. If you've ridden around the city and you've seen a billboard with Duncanville football players on it, that's part of their honoring the City of Duncanville. And so November the 13th, that football game, we're going to have special ticket prices for our citizens, there's going to be special seating for our citizens in terms of where it's going to be in the stadium, and some parking. Our PIO, Mr. Alex Hamby, is working very closely with the Duncanville Independent School District. We are tied together on this project between ourselves, the school district, and SMU. What we can't tell you is the time of the game yet. And the problem with that is, is ESPN, and ESPN is all about money. So, yeah, this is being recorded. So what ESPN, what ESPN is looking at is the win and loss records of SMU and UCF. The better those two teams are, the more prime time that game is going to be. So the better the teams' win-loss records are, as we approach November the 13th, that moves it into prime time. Now, what's prime time? I don't know. I don't know whether it's prime time 3 o'clock, or it's prime time 7 o'clock. And according to SMU, ESPN is not going to inform SMU until the week prior. So we are going to be able to work with SMU. Alex Hamby, we're going to do everything we can to publicize the actual game time once we know it, and you will be able to purchase tickets online, and you'll be able to purchase apparel as well. Some stuff is being designed.
First 100.
First 100.
They get to run on the field for Duncanville.
Oh, that's another, yeah, it's all sorts of cool stuff, but we don't know when, okay? So just mark November 13th and kind of set it aside, and once we know the time, we'll be able to help you out there. October 27th, I will have my next coffee with the mayor over in the senior center from 8:30 to 9:30. And welcome everybody who would like to come to that. And also, as a note, early voting started yesterday, with general election coming up on November 2nd. And primary in that are, there are nine constitutional amendments on the ballot for citizens to vote for. If you get confused about those things, what I think I would recommend to you, Representative Yvonne Davis, who was our legislative representative for where we reside, has published her opinions on those nine constitutional amendments. So it would, if you're thinking about voting, and you'd like to know which way and what they're talking about, she not only prescribes the amendment in its actual language, she gives a little short synopsis of what the amendment is. So there again, we have opened up our library to early voting, and the general election will be November the 2nd. So what I would like to do now is something special, and that is to present a champion You may recall that this is a program that I started to recognize champions of our city. Yes, the moniker, or the tagline for the City of Duncanville, the City of Champions. But as I've recognized and hope that you understand to this point, a champion is not just an athletic champion, which is where most of that comes from, going back in decades. We have had athletic prowess in the City of Duncanville for, going on many decades. But there are champions in business, champions in the arts, champions in education, champions in media, champions in public services, all sorts of different champions. And I've attempted to honor certain individuals with this particular champion of the city. In fact, Ms. Gail Slager back here was one of our champions of the city as well. Very nice to see you again, Gail. Tonight, I got the wrong one. Tonight, I would like to honor a champion of our city, Mr. Alan Conley. Alan, would you come up, please? Now, this is no surprise to Alan, because I had to beg him to allow me to do this. So he has acquiesced to my honoring him tonight as a champion of our city. As the owner of Subway Restaurants in Duncanville for two decades, Mr. Conley graciously provided meals to our police and fire departments, and for numerous events organized by the City of Duncanville, Duncanville Independent School District, civic and religious organizations. His willingness to invest in our community demonstrates his strong sense of civic involvement and care for not only the City of Duncanville, but its residents as well. Mr. Conley's restaurants represented economic growth, opportunity, and sustainability to businesses considering locating in Duncanville. His willingness to discuss such opportunities with potential investors proved most advantageous and beneficial to our community. Never concerned with competitive food entrepreneurs, Mr. Conley understood the power of entrepreneurship and welcomed new businesses to the city. His restaurants only became stronger and more competitive as a result. Though now retired for his long-term commitment to and investment in our community, Mr. Alan Conley is hereby recognized as a champion of the city. As mayor of the City of Duncanville, I ask our residents to join me in congratulating Mr. Conley on this memorable occasion, October 19th, 2021. Alan? And also, a medallion for the city.
I think usually these meetings go along, but thank you, I'm really humbled by this. And, you know, this city's been good to me. Bless my family, lived here, this is our 20th year here, and we ran, you know, we ran real successful businesses, the city was always in my corner, always had my back. You know, I just couldn't have done it without the help of this city hall and the folks here. And I'm just grateful, I've really, really had a wonderful life here. So thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Bless you. Okay, according to the game plan, we're going to recess for 10 minutes to enjoy our birthday, but I want to read something to you first. The 139th birthday of the City of Duncanville. October 2nd of 1882, the first post office was established in the City of Duncanville. Now, that kind of means that that's when we were recognized, that somebody actually lives here, and somebody deserves to have mail delivered. So that's when we remember the birthday, the official birthday of the City of Duncanville. I'd like to read something to you. Duncanville from 1882, when the first post office was established until today, the appointment list of postmasters. Some of these names you'll recognize. Charles Nance, 1882. Ballard Slager, 1899. Thomas Slager, 1904. Ethel Slager, 1915. Ethel Slager, 1915. Thomas Slager, 1920. Ethel Slager Barker, 1940. The Slager name appears many times in the postal records for Duncanville. Thomas Slager, postmaster in 1904, was succeeded by his daughter Ethel in 1915. She assumed the duties of postmasters again in 1920 and continued for 20 years. He retired in 1940 when his daughter Ethel Slager Barker again took on the duties. And Uncle Tom Slager, as he was known, remarked at that time that all four of his daughters had served as his assistants at one time or another, and he was going to be his daughter's assistant. That comes from the historical records from the city of Duncanville. So what we would like to do as a city is recognize the birthday of the 139th year of our city being existence. And I'm going to recess, city council at, what do we? 7:25. Please join us for refreshments and cupcakes, and we need to get back here in 10 minutes. Thank you. Is a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I will read the proclamation. And be receiving it will be our interim chief Levigny and interim deputy chief, assistant chief, what is it? Assistant chief Stogner. Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of assaultive and coercive behaviors such as physical, psychological, sexual, and economic abuse, including social isolation and stalking, that individuals use to maintain power and control over their intimate partners. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's dignity, safety, and basic human rights. And whereas domestic violence crosses all ethnic, racial, economic, age, educational, and religious lines. And whereas domestic violence is the single largest cause of injury and homicide for women. And whereas children who are exposed to domestic violence experience feelings of terror, isolation, guilt, helplessness, and grief, and have a higher risk of substance abuse, engaging in criminal behavior, and becoming victims of crime. And whereas it is incumbent on every resident to aid and assist those suffering from domestic abuse and let victims know that support is available. And whereas during the month of October, the Duncanville Police Department will be intensifying efforts to promote public understanding of family violence, increasing sensitivity to victims while emphasizing the need for citizen involvement in the efforts to reduce family violence. Therefore, I Barry Gordon, mayor of the city of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And in receiving this, again, interim chief Levigny and interim assistant chief Stogner. Sirs.
Thank you, mayor. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we even have to have a month that recognizes domestic violence, violence is something we have to deal with. No one should be preyed upon, especially not those whom we purport to love.
Thank you, sirs. Next on the agenda is another proclamation, be presented by council member Greg Contreras.
Okay, this, this proclamation is in regards to planning, National Community Planning Month, and I apologize for that. Whereas is constant and affects all city, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage the change in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, and play. And whereas, excuse me, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, designates October as National Community Planning Month, as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environments. And the celebration, whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication to the members of planning commissions and other city planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Duncanville. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners in the state of Texas and planning, and the planning division of the city of Duncanville, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to the public service by these professionals. Therefore, Barry Gordon, the mayor of the city of Duncanville, Texas, hereby proclaims the month of October 2021 as Community Planning Month in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month.
Thank you. I don't really have too much to say, other than it's a very rewarding profession. You get to nerd out to site plans, you get to go out in the community and try to help them make their neighborhood a little bit better than it was before, all the way to getting to speak at city council meetings. So I don't know many professions that allows you to do all these kinds of things in one role. So I wanted Gus to be up here with me, since we are now development services. Planning is one important prong of development services, economic development being the other major prong as well. So looking forward to the transition.
These guys will help forge our future in Duncanville.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three on our agenda, citizens input. Pursuant to section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. My apologies, I skipped the city manager's report. City manager, please accept my apology. Forgive me.
No problem. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, city council and citizens. The police department, the police department will hold a national drug take-back event on Saturday, October 23rd, 2021, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Duncanville Police Station located at 203 East Wheatland Road in Duncanville. Citizens are encouraged to bring in any unused or outdated medication for proper disposal. We will not take any needles or inhalers. This ties very closely with some of the discussions we had earlier today, and so it is very important that we do those things. Number two, in light of recent school violence, Officer Michelle Arariz represented the police department at a meeting hosted by the Dallas Police Department about mitigating the effects of bullying. The officer was one of 20 officers from DFW area agencies who committed to help bridge the gap between juveniles and police. Now, the Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting our annual Boo Bash as on Friday, October 29th, at 7:00 p.m., from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. This event is free, and there will be lots of fun activities, costume contests, crafts, and candy for the kids. I also would like to congratulate our economic development group, the director and our newly-elected chair of our EDA for holding a retreat this week in which the mayor was one of the speakers welcoming that group together to talk about the future, and it was a fabulous retreat. You'll see some pictures on Facebook. You're going to see a lot more coming from that group. Also, let's see, we also have, since our last meeting, two new employees. I think, I'm not sure if at our last meeting I introduced Mr. David Keys. I did. He's my new executive assistant. And also today on his, I think, second day on the job, we have Mr. Jeremy Tennant. Mr. Tennant will be serving as our manager of Neighborhood Services, which is formerly Code. Jeremy comes to us with a wealth of experience, a master's from the University of Minnesota in urban planning and transportation, as well as an undergraduate from Dillard University. He is from Louisiana also. But he will be working with us to start to revamp and retool and revitalize our Neighborhood Services office. And so with the background, working very closely with Gus and our team, we're looking at how can we better serve our community, and I'd like to welcome Mr. Tennant. Last and certainly not least, I'd also want to point out that we are seeing within some of our city agencies an uptick of positive COVID cases. And so we will still caution individuals to be careful, to be cautious, and to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. And again, my apologies for the oversight. And thank you, city secretary, for letting me know that I need to do that. Appreciate y'all. And we're a team. We appreciate it. All right. Now, moving on to item number three, citizens input. Pursuant to section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from deliberating any issues not on the public agenda, and such non-agenda issues may be referred to city staff for research in any future action. All persons addressing are subject to council adopted rules and limitations permitted by law. At this time, two-minute comments will be taken from the audience on any topic. To address the council, I do have some written comment cards. We have also received, city secretary has also received some written comments via email, which I will read those verbatim. We will do that in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. We also have the opportunity for anyone that wishes to speak virtually. City secretary, do we have anybody that wishes to do that?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Then moving on to the written comments that have been submitted by email, I'll take care of those first, and then we will take the comments from the individuals present here with us. The first one that I have is from Thomas Lackey. No, wait, okay, the address is in here. Hello, I live in District Four at 1818 Seabrook Drive and have resided there for eight years. I would request that any survey of the citizenry regarding the possible uses for the Lad property not be conducted without, one, some method of limiting result submissions to one per city residence if submitted in a paper form, or one result per IP address if submitted electronically, as is the common practice used by Survey Monkey and other polling software. Two, that some mention be made on any published survey forms of the following verbiage in the deed of gift and donation with restrictive covenant from the Lad family to the city of Duncanville. Quote, that the subject property above described shall be used primarily for purposes related to promotion or advancement of cultural, artistic, or educational objectives. Additionally, I would request that any ideas for any commercial parentheses, meaning for profit, close parentheses, proposals that are generated for the property regardless of origin require another citizen survey. This second survey must use the same methodology as the proposed one reflected in tonight's work session, Agenda Item 2A. Additionally, the survey should detail specific usage plans and should be required prior to any official city council action regarding development or alteration of this property. Respectfully, Thomas Lackey, manager, reporting and analytics, academic incubator, Dallas The next item is from Juan Carlos Rodriguez. My name is Alice Rodriguez. So there's, so the individual's name is different than the email address that I read. So, my name is Alice Rodriguez, and I live at 1207 Wellington Drive. I took a tour of the Lad land this past Sunday and would like to thank Councilman Kuntz for his time in leading and educating a group of citizens. I would like to advocate for the preservation of the land as a natural space and that it be developed no further than the minimum amount needed to ensure that reasonably safe and stable trails are established, as well as trash receptacles and signage as needed. There is much natural beauty in places for exploration, and this is sorely lacking in Duncanville. It is a gem that the city and its citizens should be proud of and should work together to preserve for future generations. There is already significant, to the point of excessive, commercial development in Duncanville, given that empty commercial buildings abound. The land was deeded with the express purpose of adding to the cultural, artistic, and/or educational benefit of Duncanville. Therefore, neither commercial nor residential development would honor this directive. In regards to the noise ordinance, it seems it would be difficult to support a change to the ordinance to set it at a certain decibel level that is acceptable, when the average citizen likely has no idea what 85 decibels sounds like and has no way to gauge that, at least no easily accessible way that I am aware of. This should be taken into consideration before setting the acceptable decibels of this number. Perhaps there could be a demonstration as to what 85 decibels would sound like so that the citizens could be better informed and either agree to this change or propose a different acceptable level of noise. Next item is from Hannah Olson, 614 Old Country Road. Mayor and council, as a near-lifelong resident of Duncanville, growing up near the Lad property, we just thought of it as the big field, quote unquote. I had always assumed that to explore it would be trespassing, an impression which was only made stronger by the times we were yelled at by homeowners for walking on the creek bottom next to or possibly on their property. As an adult, I was surprised to discover the Lad property's actual status. While those who want a green space do have some merit to their arguments, I urge the council to look beyond that period. Duncanville is almost built out. A number of the privately-owned retail and public areas we have are rundown and poorly designed. The opportunity to do a good development on the front half of the Lad property along Daniel Dale Road is one that should not be passed up. I think of mixed-use spaces like at Main Street Station, walking trails along the creek, some sort of center devoted to culture. That is something that will benefit Duncanville much more than keeping the Lad property entirely undeveloped. We can have both a green space like we have never had before and opportunity for new development and investment in Duncanville commercially and culturally. Next item is from Patricia Ebert, 115 South Greenstone Lane, 75116. City Secretary Downs, please have the mayor or his designate read my public comments. The Charles F. Lad is a unique property, I'm sorry, the Charles F. Lad land is a unique property. We are so incredibly fortunate that the Lads gifted this magnificent land to us citizens to enjoy. Left as is, the Charles F. Lad nature preserve will be the top-tier destination, Duncanville That concludes the email comments that we've received. Now going to the comments for individuals that are present. First one that I have is Mr. Mark Croysdale. And if you would, please move that microphone up to where it's usable.
So I'm not a public speaker, so I'm just going to make it short.
State your name and address for the record, please.
1215 Wellington Drive. And I've lived in Duncanville for a little over 25 years. I was going to congratulate Alan, but he's already got his award and left. So I was just going to talk about that Lad property. I've gone down there for years, and it is kind of a neat place. Nothing I can say would influence you to do what, you know, whatever it needs to be done down there. But I would encourage you to, I hear all the talk about doing surveys and surveys and doing the surveys. It doesn't cost anything to take a trip and drive over to Arlington and look at Veterans Park and what they did with Veterans Park. Veterans Park used to be a party park at night, and people would exercise or run during the day. But they have, they've done a really cool thing in the front of the park with the veterans thing, but in the back of the park, in the woods and in the creeks and stuff, they've left it all like it is. In fact, they've got some Audubon people come in there and they've done, they've planted native plants and native flowers and stuff like that. And if you ever go in the morning, it's, it's full of people walking in the mornings and stuff. It's a really cool place. And so you could actually make a trip over there, walk that park down there, and then go to, over here and walk this park and just imagine what you could do with this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next card I have is Judy Smithy. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Judy Smithy. I live at 1806 Cedar Hill Road. I thank you for the opportunity to come speak. I thank you, city, for having the reception that we had an opportunity to meet and visit with the three finalists for our police chief office. I would like to state strongly, enthusiastically, and wholeheartedly I would like to state strongly, enthusiastically, and wholeheartedly support the selection of Chief Mark Levigny to be our permanent police chief. He's served the city for almost three decades. Loyalty and demonstrated good service make a difference, and they should be taken into consideration. We would hate to send a message to our other city staff that loyalty is not a consideration when it comes time for promotions. No one coming in from the outside could know the city, the department, the officers, staff of Duncanville nearly so well. As this is the case, no learning curve should accompany Chief Levigny's transition into official chief of our police department. We have no doubt that Chief Mark Levigny is the best qualified candidate for this position of leadership. I have visited with a number of friends and neighbors and friends all over the city who all agree with me on that he is the man for the job. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. The next card I have is for Grady Smithy. And may we assume you have the same address as the former speaker?
Yes, sir. City of Duncanville since 1950. Went to school here, graduated from high school here. All that, served 22 years on the council. Y'all are sitting on it right now. And I don't believe we ever had a more qualified candidate for police chief than Mark Levigny. And I'm here to support his, you know, his quest for that. And I also want to tell you what it means to other people in our organization when you don't take someone that everybody knows, you know, you ought to take. Because I had that experience in the part of agriculture. Whenever everybody thought I was going to be a reasonable administrator right at the end of my career. And they brought an unqualified person in behind instead of me, and then asked me to help that person out. And I tried, but unfortunately, that person did not know anything about how to manage people. And so, it didn't work. But anyway, and it -- but the problem was that so many people that were good people that we put together an organization, left the organization to go to other organizations during that period of time. And that's what happens to you when you don't reward good service. Second thing that I want to say is that about a little over 10 years ago, I helped some folks get a road project, it just doesn't surprise y'all, done down in Carson County. I got a call from Highway Department yesterday inviting me to come down to the grand opening of the road that I helped them get started, you know, 10 and a half years ago, my last year that I served on the council. I'm going to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card I have is Gail Sliger. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Gail Sliger, 1405 South Main, Duncanville, Texas. I am a 74-year resident of the city of Duncanville. I would like to say that I echo what Ms. Judy Smithy had to say. We really believe that Mark Levigny is the very best candidate. I read the credentials of the other candidates, visited with them at the meet and greet. I also think we send a message to the rest of the staff that loyalty does not count. 28 years, no bad marks, continuing education to prepare himself for this position. I highly encourage you to make him our permanent police chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card I have is Mark Graham. And please state your name and address for the record.
Mark Graham, 410 Santa Fe Trail. First off, I'd like to say that Mr. Lackey really, what you read, kind of touches on exactly how I feel. If we're going to talk about developing, it needs to be put to the city what you're going to do. If it's going to be held as a natural place, put it to the residents. We've had no, zero, none, input on this. It's time we did. So, I hope that goes forward. I hope people are given a chance to say whether they want buildings that in 10 years, if they fail, are eyesore, or if they want a natural green space that goes all the way down to Harrington Park. The other part, and I'm just going to thank y'all for this, sitting on it for 23 years, y'all have let the property heal. It's probably more natural than it's been in a long, long, long time. Y'all's absolute sitting on it has improved the land. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Erica Browning, next, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
Erica Browning, 442 East Cherry Street. I agree with almost everything that's been said. I do definitely support Chief Levigny for the position. In the briefing room, there is a plaque honoring Duncanville for its Bronze Level Award as a Certified Scenic City in August of 2018. This achievement is commendable, and I would hope we could work on ensuring our city could qualify for recertification at an even higher award level. One thing that would lead us to that worthy goal is to designate the Charles Ladd property as a nature preserve. Now, that would be something to be proud of. Recent discussions in the past couple of years among residents have revolved around finding some event or landmark that Duncanville can be known for, something unique to our town that would draw visitors and encourage civic pride. Rather than an event that draws people once a year, a nature preserve would be something that anyone could benefit from year-round at no cost so as to exclude, so as not to exclude anyone. I've been to the natural area like many have. If you look at my Facebook page, This Is Duncanville, or on Nextdoor, you will see dozens of photos from many people of the gorgeous gem we have in this natural space. This is not a gem that can be sold off to the highest bidder. This was a gift for the people of this town, and we want to see it preserved in such a way that everyone can enjoy it in its natural state. I would hate for the family who graciously gifted it to us to feel their gift was not appreciated and regret such a blessing. Before I yield the floor, I also want to briefly remind you that I presented an ordinance for the city to consider, which would protect us from the threat of unconstitutional mandates. Until today, it has been very difficult to get anyone on council to respond to my follow-up emails. Residents of our city are losing their jobs over a medical procedure they don't want. There are people here tonight that will be standing with me at future meetings on this topic. We're not going away.
Thank you. And the final card I have is Stan Smith. Please state your name and address for the record.
Stan Smith, 344 Fouts Avenue. It's a pleasure to be here before y'all tonight. I'm not going to waste your time. I'm just here to let you know that I'm 100% in support of Mark Levigny to be our police chief, and I think that just about says it all. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our citizen comments. Moving on to item number four, the consent agenda. City Secretary, please read the consent agenda items.
Item 4A, consider the minutes for the June 15 City Council Regular Meeting, June 22 City Council Special Meeting, June 29 and June 30 City Council Budget Workshop. 4B, consider a resolution adopting the Texas Term Sheet and its Interstate Allocation Schedule regarding the Global Opioid Settlement. 4C, consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Duncanville, Texas authorizing a purchase of Rubrik Backup Hardware and Software from CDW Government through Pro-Mark GCA Contract Schedule GS-35S-303DA in the amount of $84,795.
Thank you. Prior to taking a motion on these items, I want to just give little information to citizens. I did mention this in our briefing session, but I want to do it in City Council as well on item 4B, that the city of Duncanville is in some discussions with UT Southwestern Medical Center and with Methodist Charlton Hospital on the exploration of opportunities to use the monies that is coming to the city from the Global Opioid Settlement. Nothing definitive as yet, but both of those organizations are excited about talking about the opportunities for how we can use those monies in terms of educating individuals on opioid abuse. Thank you. Chair will accept a motion to approve?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. McNabbernet. Second, please.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Vera Cruz. Council, please vote. Thank you. Unanimously approved consent agenda items. Moving on to item number five, items for individual consideration. Item 5A, conduct a public hearing, 2021-20, for consideration and action regarding the request of Jose Garcia, applicant and owner, to include a specific use permit, and I'm calling it quotes, SUP, to allow for the use of truck repair on Woodhaven Block 2, Lot 3, approximately 0.92 acre, more commonly known as 410 East Redbird Lane. Mr. Thibodeau, our city planner, will present the item, and after that, I will open it up to a public hearing. Mr. Thibodeau.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As noted, this is a SUP request for the use of truck repair at the subject property. Here's an aerial of the subject property, surrounded by residential and commercial uses. To the north is the city of Dallas, and to the south is our existing residential homes. To the very immediate adjacent west of the property is a residential home as well, and to the east of the property are commercial uses. And here's a shot of the zoning of the property currently under commercial. If you guys remember back in April, the, there was a, an SUP that was revoked or rescinded for the use of outdoor batting cages, so that was associated with this property as well. It was previously an SUP zone property with a base zone of commercial. And so, this is the project's scope, but I wanted to talk about kind of what happened and what led us to this point and why we're actually requesting another SUP. We got through the motion of removing, revoking the SUP that was previously there, and then we went through the CO process with the applicant. And so, it was listed as a minor automotive repair. So, there's a review step that we go through, and that takes a little bit of time. And then, there's the inspection process once we get through the reviews. And so, when our Neighborhood Services Group, they were running by the property, they saw bobtails that were parked in the parking lot of the, of the subject property.
Explain a bobtail for those that may not know.
A bobtail is a 18-wheeler without the trailer. So, you know, these are untethered 18-wheelers, basically. So, we brought the applicant back in, just explained to them that this is actually a different use than minor automotive repair. If you remember, we talked about during that, the public hearing revoking the previous SUP, that the gentleman would be working on minor, or heavy, actually, I'm sorry, light to medium-load fleet vehicles is actually what that letter said. So, we informed him, I think he was under the impression that medium-load vehicles included bobtails. We just informed him, showed him the definition out of the zoning ordinance that actually servicing 18-wheelers, bobtails in this case, actually fell under the definition of truck repair and required SUP approval to do that kind of activity on the site. And we appreciate the applicant being understanding and working through this process with us. And so, at the September 27, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission recommended approval subject to the following: Outside storage shall be in conformance with Section 4.07(c)(6) of the zoning ordinance. We don't expect too much storage, per se, but the bobtails that are there, you know, would need to be staged in the parking lot, sometimes overnight, depending on the load. And the site luckily does, it's, it's got plenty of room, basically, to store and then screen vehicles as well. There's an existing, it's pretty modern, black tube-later fence, I believe it's steel, not wrought iron. That could just easily be modified to put a mesh screening to block that view from the right-of-way, which is required in the commercial district. You need to block that view if you're going to do outside storage, where it's a little different industrial zones where you don't have to necessarily block that view, you just create a perimeter around the site. The other stipulation that PNZ put on the SUP request was, it shall be required to be renewed after five years after the adoption of the SUP ordinance. But staff wants to recommend shortening that renewal period to two years, if you find that appropriate. And then, kind of what we did with all of Bed and Breakfast, the subsequent renewal period, the fee be waived for the applicant at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau. What we're going to do is open this up to public hearing, and after the public hearing, the City Council will have the opportunity for discussion. In the way we're going to conduct the public hearing, to give you the process, we're going to open, I'm going to open the public hearing, we're going to timestamp that public hearing. We're going to give 10 minutes in total to those individuals who wish to speak in favor of this SUP. At the conclusion of that 10 minutes, we're going to open 10 minutes to those who wish to speak in opposition to this SUP. And then, the council is going to make a motion to close the public hearing. We will timestamp that closure of the public hearing, and at that time, we will open up this item to discussion with the City Council and with Mr. Thibodeau, and as we need to pursue that further. So, thank you. So, the timestamp is 8:10, and I am opening the public hearing on item 5A, conduct a public hearing and consideration and action regarding the request of Jose Garcia for an SUP to allow the use of truck repair on Woodhaven Block 2, Lot 3, approximately 0.92 acre, more commonly known as 410 East Redbird Lane. Any individual who wishes to speak in favor of this SUP, please piece them forward. Seeing none, I'm going to close that 10 minutes for the individuals who wish to speak in favor. I'm going to open 10 minutes for individuals who wish to speak in opposition to this Seeing none present, I do have some information, I have input from an individual who texted me, and I will read that individual's text. This is citizen input in regard to the public hearing, and I also had a conversation with this individual as we would have during a public hearing as well. So, Mr. Thibodeau and citizens and council, I will read what I received from this particular individual.
Mayor, is that, is that more, is that more appropriate, City Manager, to be read at a different time versus doing a public hearing now?
Was it asked to be included in the public record? The mayor could operate there, having received it, read it in the public record.
The request that I received by text message, when I called the individual, she asked me to use this information during the public hearing itself.
You can read it in the record. I would assume you received it, but you're not advocating on behalf of the applicant. You're not advocating on behalf of the person that sent it.
That is correct. I'm putting into the record what I received from this individual.
Thank you.
Just for, let's see, just for information, this text message was time stamped at 8:01 PM yesterday. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Francis Rizzo here. On tomorrow's council agenda is a special consideration for a truck repair permit at 410 East Redbird Lane. I cannot attend the meeting because I have family flying into love at 6:00 PM. I am at 603 Woodhaven Boulevard, which is just two blocks from my backyard. Behind that address is another family residential property. We cannot have any more industrial businesses encroaching on our families. It is owned commercial, so we need businesses that families need, not more abuses of zoning and undesirable activity. We have a noisy, we have a noisy businesses behind us with gun shootings and excessive noise. That address is also adjacent to the American Legion Post 81. Please oppose this application for special use. That closes the text message that I received from Francis Rizzo at 603 Woodhaven. City Attorney, is that input acceptable?
Yes, Mayor, it is. You'll need to allow the City Secretary to get a screenshot of that so we can include it in the record.
Will do, sir. Any other individuals present who wish to oppose this SUP? Seeing none, the chair will accept a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Cooks, seconded by Mr. McNabbernet. Please vote on closing the public hearing. We are unanimously voted closing the public hearing. The timestamp is 8:13. We're now going to open up this item to discussion with the City Council. Any questions to be posed to Mr. Thibodeau? And I see Mr. Contreras. Mr. Contreras, please.
Yes, I have a couple of comments and possibly a question. First off, as I understand it, this individual was given a certificate of occupancy for simple automotive repair. Is that correct?
No, it was never issued.
Never issued?
That's right.
Okay. So, but that was his intent? At some point, it's mentioned in here that he was going to have a automotive repair business.
Right. During the revoking, this happened right before you got on council. During the revocation process of the former SUP for the sports complex, it was discussed what the intent was for the, for the site, which was the use of minor automotive repair and ser- the, for the site, which was the use of minor automotive repair and services for fleet vehicles, basically, and we talked about light and medium load vehicles, so that was the, the understanding up until we, we saw the bobtails on site.
Okay. So he ignored that and moved ahead, not only with an automotive repair business without a certificate of occupancy, he advanced it up a level to include truck repairs?
We talked about what was going on, on the property, once neighborhood services kind of reported what they saw, so we asked the gentleman, and basically, he was trying to, he's moving businesses, basically, and so the, some of the, I, I believe in another city, he was closing up hi, his property where he was conducting business, and then moving things over to, to this site, kind of staging and believing he was closer to, we were in the review process of the CO being issued, and so I think he believed that, hey, I'm, I'm closing in on getting my inspections done, I'm kind of staging my area. That's, that's what the conversation, what we had. At that point, you know, we, we kind of cleared up the issue, showed him the definitions, talked about kind of what was discussed and what the intent was for the property, and I think it was just a miscommunication as far as uses go, and that was pretty much it, and so staff put a hold on that, that CO that was currently still open, that hadn't been issued, that got through the review process.
I think you're being kind, calling it a miscommunication. He got a little ahead of himself without getting proper permission from the city.
Potentially.
Okay. One of the things about specific use permits, and it came up recently in another part of town, a more well-traveled portion of town, and it was objected for a number of reasons, but one of them being that if we renew, if we've come up with a new comprehensive zoning ordinance, we should be cautious about how many of these cases we get before us where we just turn around and change it at somebody's request, and not always what I consider to be a legitimate request. And, and that's partially what you state in some of this report here, is that it's not necessarily, this request involves truck repair, which does not appear to be compatible with the example of commercial establishments, as noted in the comprehensive plan. So we hear that statement, but yet, this gets through the Planning and Zoning Commission 70, as though that statement has no meaning. And so I'm asking council members, when in part, we turn down a similar request for gas station pumps, based on, in part, not changing a zoning ordinance that had already been put in place, and what I want to make sure of, this, this is my district, this is an area that probably 70% of this population has never been down that street, has no business going in that direction, there's too many other ways to get where you got to go without going up there, and so I don't want, and I hope my council members will understand where I'm coming from, I don't want this out-of-sight, out-of-mind kind of approach to this that would cause a different consideration than we gave to a more populated area, and thereby giving you this variance when it's, it's not in compliance with the current comprehensive zoning ordinance. And I, I, I think there are enough residents up there, although their properties are very long properties, 200, 300 feet, so the letters only go out to a few people because of the sizes of these lots. I think there's a lot more that that community out there would like to say about this. I don't know if they'd be willing to work with some fencing issues that might obscure some of the trucks, I don't know if they just would be opposed to it as a special use permit request. I just want to make sure that this council gives equal consideration to an area of town that is not the prettiest in town, if you drive up there, and it's a mixture of business, old business, new businesses, and residential, both around it and behind it, to the south. And I want to make sure that those citizens are treated the same way in considering a request like this as those were in the more populated area that's been discussed with some other special use permits. So that's all I've got to say right now. Thank you.
Okay. One thing, Mr. Thibodeau, I did notice in our full package, that I believe it was eight letters maybe were sent out in accordance with the law or the ordinance, in terms of within 200 feet of the business itself. Some of those were repeat, actually, going to the American Legion Post 81, which kind of takes them out of play, in terms of the number of the people that we contacted, residents and businesses. We did receive one individual response that was opposed to this, out of those letters that we did send out. Thinking about what Mr. Contreras has said, you know, I, I would, I drove to this location because I was, I do go out Redbird Lane every once in a while, for purposes, to play golf, because Dallas Golf Course is down Redbird Lane. So I see this road quite frequently, but I did not remember this activity. This morning, I drove to this activity to put eyes on it myself, at 410 Redbird Lane, and interestingly, all the times that I have gone up and down Redbird Lane, I have never seen the structure, because it is set back, I don't know how many hundreds of feet from the road. And for those council members who have not seen it, and you can see it on, on some of the aerial views that we have, those five bays, three of those bays can easily accommodate an 18-wheeler tractor, because of the height of the door. And so what Mr. Garcia is intending to do, I see, is to use those bays for, for tractor repair. Going with what Mr. Contreras is saying and thinking about the residents, what interested me, because I've never been down Woodhaven, so I went around and tried to find out how to get from Redbird Lane to Woodhaven, and the only way to access Woodhaven is either at the beginning of Main Street, and going west, I'm sorry, going east, or going all the way to Cochrane Hill, making a right-hand turn, and then going west on Woodhaven, and I drove the length of Woodhaven, looking for the 400 block, to see what this activity looked like from the resident's side. Looking at it from both Redbird Lane and from the resident's side, there's a significant amount of, of foliage, trees. I wouldn't call it landscaping, because I think there are probably a lot of volunteer trees, but it does block, the, the growth does block the view of this property by the residents that backed directly up to it. In knowing that we comply with the intent of the law to talk to individual, or to send letters to individuals within 200 feet, I'm wondering if, going on what Mr. Contreras has said, if, if maybe we could consider the, the spirit of, of the ordinance to maybe expand that radius and talk to some residents along Woodhaven. As Ms. Rizzo has said in, in her text message to me, that those residents are exposed to businesses along that entire stretch of Woodhaven and Redbird Lane. Would there be any possibility to possibly table this item, and then council considering, I don't know, what, waving that 200-mile ra, 200-foot radius to, to query the, the citizens along Woodhaven to see what they would think about this?
Oddly, oddly enough, I read this statute today.
I can't hear you, sir.
I said, oddly enough, I read this statute today under the state law with regard to notification, and the council, by two-thirds vote, may prescribe a method of notification that is in excess of what is required under the zoning ordinance. So what you're asking is, based on a two-thirds vote, to renotice it, but you'll have to draw some parameters, so the staff will know how to send those notices out, but you can do that under state law. Your ordinance does not permit that.
I understand. So what I would be requesting, without knowing the specific addresses from the entire length of Woodhaven, from the, from the east to the west, would be asking the city manager to go to Decat or whatever, or look at the addresses for the entire length of Woodhaven, and to expand the inquiry radius, I guess, to include all those residents whose properties abut the commercial properties on, on Redbird Lane. I know that's ambiguous, but it's the only way I can define it, in terms of, I can't put a number in terms of 600 feet or whatever, I can only say the, the length of Woodhaven.
Could you do it based on, you want to notify all the residential properties on Woodhaven from Main Street to Redbird?
Cochrane Hill, to Cochrane Hill. Oh, that would work.
Yes, maybe.
So you could do that, and to include all of the businesses?
Businesses as well.
From, on Redbird Lane?
Yes, sir.
From Main Street to Cochrane Hill?
Yes, sir.
And that's your suggested motion for the council?
That is my suggested motion for council, but I don't want to put a stop to any further discussion by council. You know, it's like, I put that on one of the tables for y'all to think about, but I want to leave a still room to have more discussion about this before I make that motion.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll remember it, and we'll come back.
Just being courteous to the rest, I, is, I'm being courteous to council, you know, I don't want to say, okay, got a motion, we've done this before, it's like, hey, I haven't finished talking yet, but y'all already got a motion. Well, what I don't want to do is make that motion until everyone's had some, some time to, to think about this and, and say what they want to say, but then, it is my intent to make that motion.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Koontz, I see your light on, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I've, you know, I've had a couple of conversations with individuals that live in that, that general area, and I had an opportunity to ride around with the fire marshal, and we rode around the area and went around some of those structures, and it's, supporting what a lot of people have told me, it's just one code violation after another, one fire code violation after another, and I, at this point, I wouldn't be able to support approving this particular permit until we have a, an overhaul of the area or look at the whole area in general, and so, but I would support tabling it, as the mayor suggested, to expand the, the area so that we can have more residents, providing more input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koontz. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have my light on.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cooks, yes.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, I'm looking at this, and I also have driven the area many times as well, I have also talked to a resident in that area, and so I will not support this SUP for that area, in addition to, as we talk about trying to really build up our area a little bit more, even if, even on the commercial side, I just can't support what, what this, what is it stating for right now at this point. I also like to know, when we do send these letters out, even in the 200-mile radius, and I'd be, are we crafting city manager the language to be both in Spanish and in English, to, since we don't know where, who lives in those residents' home, but either way, I, I still, even, even as you answer that, I'll give you a chance to answer that, but I still won't be supporting this SUP for this item, based upon what I've heard from residents.
Okay. Mr. Contreras?
Can you answer that for me, please?
I will ask the planning manager to do it. As far as the surveys that went out, were they in both Spanish and English, or were they in English only?
English only. We can produce in Spanish, no problem.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Contreras, follow on, please.
Just another reminder about the information that was provided to us under background history, says the, the plan, referencing the comprehensive plan, recognizes that commercial uses, and this is a commercial zone district, correct?
That's right, yes, sir.
Okay. The plan recognizes that commercial uses are more intense than retail establishments, yet also provides goods and services for the public, and further states, examples of commercial establishments would include hotels, restaurants, and big-box retailers. Now, having said that, we don't see any of that up there, and I don't know that there's any of that coming in the near future, but I will remind those people that are not familiar, especially with Woodhaven, is in the last 20 years, probably more in the last 10 years, we've seen probably in excess of two dozen houses that have been built on Woodhaven, that are somewhere in the 250,000 to possibly 400,000-plus. There are some beautifully developed houses out there that you wouldn't have seen 20 years ago. So people are investing up there, they're improving it, and so as we're improving the residential situation up there, and those people on Woodhaven do complain about constant cut-through truck traffic, that even though it's signed down there, and, and Ms. Risa was one of them, who counts so many trucks that go back and forth illegally down that street, this type of an operation may just add to that when they're testing the trucks after they work with them. It's a natural circle to take. I'm not saying that they're for sure going to do that, but it just doesn't, it doesn't fit right now for me, so for further discussion, I, I would agree with the tabling at this time.
The ruler would not agree.
I would.
And I can validate what Mr. Contreras is saying in terms of the improvements of the homes. You drive down Woodhaven, and all of a sudden, there's this, it, I'm sure that the, the original land was, it was demoed, it was demolished, and then a beautiful house built on that property, and there's several of those, and so I, I do validate what Mr. Contreras is saying about the residents there trying to improve, or recognizing the advantage and the benefits of being on Woodhaven and that property itself. So, yes, Mr. Cooks?
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with the tabling, simply because, I mean, we're going to come up with the same answer when, when it comes back to us, and therefore, when you look at this area and driving that area with code, with the code compli, code enforcement, as well as driving the area myself, there are plenty more violations other than this just one, and so we're not, we're not making it better for the residents, or you're telling me that the homes are going to, has been picked up and have been improved. So tabling this is only spreading it out more, but it's really up to us as council to not table this and not approve this, and move forward with trying to make this whole area a little better.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would, I would tend to agree with what was just stated by council member Cooks, because I, I just don't see any, any meshing between some of the things that are going on in this neighborhood and that particular type of business. So I, I think the special use permit should be denied, and that person be allowed to operate according to the terms that were initially set, in, in terms of minor automotive
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. What Mr. Cooks and Mr. Harvey have said has great merit. My intent in asking for a broader field of input was to allow the residents to know that we're concerned about that entire area. Knowing to do so would take more staff time, time costs money, and then doing it and having it properly translated, more money, and I really don't want that to happen either. As I said, my original intent was to show the citizens along Woodhaven and the businesses that we're concerned for that particular street, in terms, you know, for Mr. Contreras' district itself, too. And in consideration of what's been said by Mr. Cooks and Mr. Harvey, it's, I have no problem not going forward with my motion, mostly to save, I think, you're probably right, probably going to get the same answer from, from all those residents from Cochrane Hill all the way down to Main Street. Don't want to spend staff time and, and money to, to make another issue out of this and table it, and spend more, more issues with that, so thank you for that. I see, Mr. McNerney, you have a comment, please, sir?
No comment, Mayor. I just want to make the motion to deny the SUP.
We have a motion to deny this SUP, and we have a second by Mr. Koontz. Now, recognize, council, how we vote on, on denial, okay? So if you vote yes to approve, you're going to vote yes, and it's going to be a denial. So you vote for the denial, which is a yes. If you vote no, you're wanting to not approve the denial. Okay? Clear?
Well, I'm going to, I heard the city manager mumbling over there, I'd like him go and speak up and say what you're saying.
City Attorney?
City Attorney, thank you. This is one of those cases where you're voting opposite, so if you vote yes, that means you don't want to develop it.
Right.
If you vote no, then you have to reconsider a motion to approve.
So, that's, Mr. McNerney, restate your motion, please.
If you make a motion to approve, and then it doesn't receive any votes, then it's denied.
I will, I will make the motion, then we will approve this, so we'll have it.
And, and making the motion, just so you know, or second it, just means the matter's brought before the body, it doesn't mean you necessarily support the motion, what you're supporting is a vote.
So, council, I understand. Mr. McNerney? So council, I understand Mr. McNerney has restated the motion to approve, to approve the SUP. You either vote in favor of the SUP or you vote in opposition to the SUP.
Who was the second?
Yes, it needs to be second and then it's properly voted.
Mr. Coontz, second's that other motion, yeah.
I just want to make sure, again, every time we do, do it this way, we get all, well, I get all twisted up, I won't blame anybody else. I just want to know, I'm voting no not to approve the SUP.
That's correct.
Then push the red button if you don't, okay.
Thank you, thank you, that's all I want to hear.
Okay, so the motion.
We go through this too many times and we, to me, screw it up, but anyway.
We are voting to approve the SUP. City Council, please vote. Mr. Cooks, uh, by a vote of six to one.
Vote red.
Six of us get it and one of us doesn't, but that's okay, that's okay.
Keep, we keep changing the power we do this.
Okay, so, uh, city manager, this SUP is not approved. We got a great council here.
It's, it's that city attorney, the mayor, I'm worried about.
But really what happens is you vote no to a negative motion and yes to a positive motion.
Have you ever heard the old Shakespeare expression, "All the world is crazy except for thee and me, and sometimes I wonder of thee." I don't know if Shakespeare said that or not, but I should have heard. Okay, where are we?
Five B.
Five B, five B. Consider resolution confirming the city manager's appointment of Nigel Robinson as a member of the Duncanville Civil Service Commission for a three-year term through October 31, 2024. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Benavides.
Mayor, Council, I think many of you are familiar with our Civil Service Commission, it consists of three members appointed, uh, by the CEO, which is the city manager, myself, and confirmed by the city council, municipality. Uh, this is a responsibility established by the Texas Government Code 143. The commission oversees the entry level and promotional testing, hiring, and employment procedures for police and fire classified service. The primary responsibility of the commission is to serve as an appeal board for fire and police employees who request the commission to act as an impartial third party to review and investigate actions over which they have authority. Oftentimes, they concern disciplinary issues. Uh, per our commission, the commission members serve staggered three-year terms with three, uh, the terms of one member expiring each year. The current members are Li Polk, Lee Out Polk, Chairman Nigel Robinson, Vice Chairman, and Tracy Martin. Uh, Curtis, Curtis Smith resigned the commission in May 2020, and Mr. Nigel Robinson was appointed to serve out the remainder of his term. Uh, what we're asking, uh, is to appoint, reappoint Mr. Nigel Robinson to a three-year term because he filled a partial term. Nigel Robinson, uh, was recommended unanimously by staff to fill the vacancy of the commission. Mr. Robinson has fulfilled the duties of the Civil Service Commission quite well. Uh, this is from our human resources director who manages this process. He has been a resident of the city of Duncanville for four years. It's, Mr. Robinson is a marketing consultant who has experience in project management and utilizes ethical decision-making and moral practices which lead themselves through. And that concludes my recommendation.
Thank you, city manager. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Mayor Protem, Mr. Harvey, and seconded by Mr. Cooks. Please vote. Unanimously approved, and congratulate Mr. Robinson. That concludes, uh, the items for individual consideration, but if you look at item 5C, that's taking a necessary action resulting with executive session, which we are moving to the very end of city council. So now what we're going to do, our game plan is to go back to what we didn't take care of during the briefing session, and that is item 2C. And that is discussion on the usage of 103 East Wheatland Road, Duncanville, Texas. Where'd she go? No, we, we need to move executive, executive session needs to be the very, very last thing that we do. Unless you don't want to do this now, you want to do it at a different city council meeting. Okay, alright, we are now on item 2C. And I know our IT department now has to find that and pull it up for us. And by the way, I think what we need to do as well, when this item is concluded, we will go ahead and take the staff and board reports, close out this open, and then we'll go to executive session.
Okay.
Okay? So item 2C, uh, discussion on the usage of 103 East Wheatland Road, Duncanville, Texas. City Manager, floor is yours.
Mayor and Council, uh, our, uh, my assistant city manager, Chief Brown, has been the lead on this, but I'm going to try to work my way through. Uh, as we've been talking about the use of the old library building, we've been looking at options of what we can do, uh, in, uh, usage of it. Uh, one of our main recommendations of it is to use this for staff. And so what I'm going to show you is a floor plan of the current facility. And the, as you see, uh, it is a, it was built out, uh, it has some furniture still remaining in it. But as we've looked at the usage, there are some areas that are very open, and then there are some office areas. Uh, what we are going to talk about is a proposal that staff has as we start to look at our staff groin, is that we have a space issue for both police, fire, public works, and many of our employees. And so, uh, part of that opportunity is suspended, but there's also some other ideas that come to it, uh, that you're going to hear. We talked a little bit about it when we talked about the funding, uh, for the American Rescue Plan, looking at broadband. Uh, so what we are recommending is, uh, within the old library is locating staff there. One is our information technologies, there are four staff individuals there. Our human resources department, our public information office, our new neighborhood services with six employees and our city secretary with two employees. Uh, as a result of that, we're also looking at possibly moving, uh, at that point, we would move our economic development and planning into where the human resources suite is in city hall. This would then open up some space as our police department has a space issue, uh, that the IT area, which is located adjacent to the police department. We would be looking at possibly locating, uh, our police in that area. Our public works department, who also, uh, you'll find have space issues, would be allowed the opportunity to, to locate their individuals into the area that would be vacated by neighborhood services. So this is an internal overview. When we look at it, I, I put up here, and the other room will look a little bit bigger, is some, some area views of what is there and, and walking over there. When you first walk in, there is furniture. Uh, one of the unique things that we also would like to do is when you first come into it, there was a computer lab. We would like to make that into a workforce training. Uh, that would be a partnership with either Dallas Community College or Workforce Board on having an area when we know what's happening as a result of COVID and some of the other things, is to do employment readiness. Where people could come in and look for jobs, we'd have classes taught there and things like that. And so that would be a, a multi-purpose area, uh, that we would be utilizing. We have oftentimes, for example, people who come and they want to apply for jobs, well, they may not have computer, computer access, and so we would create that and, and also job training. Uh, but moving into the space and moving to the bottom area, uh, you'll notice there are four offices there, uh, nice sized offices and some on the side. In the middle area, there was a computer lab, and so from a wiring standpoint, what we would look at is making that the city center for our broadband. As we start to roll out, uh, some of our broadband initiatives, we have some underway, and so we've been looking at how do we do that partnership? But from an IT standpoint, you have many of the things that you need because this has already been an IT area. And so that staff would move there, they'll service the whole city. Uh, other areas in which we're looking at in that open area over there, we've been trying to figure out how and where do we locate our new neighborhood services organization? It is actually more space than I think they can use, but I, at this point in time, we haven't spoken about spending any build-out money, so I'm trying to use it as is. And so as we get through that next phase, we may come back and say, years from now, that we want to do some build-out if we have more needs. But it's a very open space, it has a lot of practical use, and so we're looking at creating a work area in one portion of it, but also some training space over there for staff. Where we can have some tables set up, meeting rooms where we can start doing things. Uh, very similar, if any of you went to the opening or to the new e-sports or e-gaming site, it's that type of environment. And when I saw that site, it looked to me exactly like this open area that you'll see there with the orange where you can set it up and do a lot more there. Uh, and a couple of other areas, they have a staff lounge, and so it's pretty much a make-ready. Uh, we looked at, uh, talking to economic development, we've had folks interested in it, but we also realized the fact is, there are some issues. We're, we're right here at city hall, it is a former city hall facility, we do still have the Dallas County. And so as we've been trying to figure out where we're going to move staff, and this doesn't solve all of our staffing, uh, space problems, but this would be a start for us. And this would be a pretty much make-ready space. Uh, many of the desks and chairs and tables have been left there, we did donate the equipment as we discussed, but it would give us a chance to have a place to locate some of our staff. And so, uh, what we're recommending is moving staff into that site. Uh, long range, if council wants to look at long range of what other uses we can do, that is still a possibility, but this is a solution to help with some of our needs today. That was kind of the overview, and we just wanted to see how council felt and, and give you a briefing on it.
Could you go back to the slide where you show who stays, who moves?
Yes.
That one, right there. Um, city manager, it is totally within your jurisdiction in Baileywick, and, uh, this is informational item for us. Uh, we, we can't and will not vote on this, but I've got some, from, just from an organizational behavior standpoint, I know you've thought about these things. That, okay, police to the former IT suite, that IT suite's not that, so we're still going to keep police?
Yes.
And expand police into the IT space?
Yes, this gives them extra space.
They're not giving up where they're at right now?
No, 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 they need more space than that, but this is a start for giving them some space. They have, uh, I, one of the things you'll hear when they talk about in the open house is they have an employee who's really in a closet. And so it's not the end solution, and we're going to, we've done, and I found a facility use plan for citywide, so we've got to think about this holistically. So this to me is a short-term solution because we have a building there that we use on and off, so yes, they're going to need more space and we're going to have to do planning for that.
So from a technologically, from a technological standpoint, a new security door is going to be put at that location?
That site is already secure.
Because you can't transit between city hall and police department without a pass right now.
Uh, no, you can't, but there, the place that IT is in also has a secure, so it's, the door is next door to the police entrance, so they just can go straight in there. So they have access to us, but we don't have access to them, and so the police will also have access to that spot.
Got it, okay, the other question, and here again, organizational behavior is city secretary not being.
Right here with me?
Yeah.
No, me too.
You don't mind?
I.
I gave her a really good plan.
I, I, that, I, I struggle with that one, and I think the issue, right now we have the city secretary sitting in the finance area, and I know that, uh, if I could find another solution, I would. And I, I'm still not set on that one completely just because it is the accessibility. But I also recognize the importance of when my human resources is over there, people can come there and have a little bit more privacy. And, and I will say to you, one of my, my targets of why I picked the administrative team, which are the folks who report to me being over there, is having them together because they collaborate. And so it looks like I'll be walking back and forth, but it's also about security. One is, where do we do our records management? And so there's space there that we can start to focus on our internal records management program with her being over there and having that much space. Uh, I believe that she will still have to have a workstation here because it's not going to be as easy as it looks, but it is a short-term for me.
Okay, well, as I said, it's, uh, it's your call, and it's an experiment, you know, nothing, nothing's in concrete, if, you know.
That was at the bottom, it wasn't at the top.
If Kristin becomes a little ornery, just move her back, you know.
But see, you can go visit, you know, where they have office space for you, and all of you, everybody.
I don't see that there.
Um, yeah, I'll talk to you about that.
That's, you know, that, that's important because the mayor, or even council members, have no place to conduct meetings in this building other than reserving the entire briefing room. So any meeting that I'm, that I'm calling with citizens or staff, I have to go through Kristin to make sure the entire briefing room is available. So, yeah, that's, that would be a good thing.
Looking at that site, you see that we have that backside over there, there's so much room for expansion. I mean, uh, if anyone's interested, I would love to walk you over there, uh, we are cleaning it now, but I'd love for you to see it. Uh, I have a lot of vision for what we can do over there, and when it comes to creating a place for you to meet and having a reception area, it's a beautiful site.
And we would, no, we, I can't speak for council, I would presume that there's been some, excuse me, form of economic analysis that has said, we need this space. If we were to build space, it would cost X dollars, but we can use this space at Y dollars. And those Y dollars versus X dollars and economic income for economic development, for the space, for businesses, for economic development, that balance has been weighed?
We've talked about it, I think that there's a battle between the economic development and the staff, and so if you'd like, I can get you some more information on what is.
Nope, 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 just saying that, that's been given consideration and weighed.
But reality is, if I built something new and, and knowing that I have a space issue and, and even thinking of our fire station, this is not the time to build. Uh, I think what, the fortunate part we have is we have two buildings across the street, and so I'm focusing the economic development attention on our Dallas County building.
Okay, uh, so Mr. Contreras, first, please.
Um, funding?
That's why we're going makeshift, they left all of their furniture there, so the big funding will be the wiring of the technology. Uh, I think in our ARPA, we talked about some HVAC items, but the one rule that I have for them right now is, this is a, uh, move, uh, move in as it is. All we're doing is cleaning and maintaining, we're already paying electricity on it, we're already paying water, it's been functional, and we've been supporting this building, but no use in it.
Okay, so funding's not a problem as far as you're concerned?
No, we're already paying for this building.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Cooks?
Thank you, just answered my questions as well.
Um, city attorney, we are legally clear to move into this building? Okay.
They explained to you before the building, the, the lease with Eon was terminated, the building's under your control and custody from that time.
Just technicality, want to make sure that we're, we're clear on the record on that, okay? Any other questions?
Signage, how, how, how are you going to work at signage, I mean, because?
We're, we're going through now, uh, doing a real assessment. Uh, the good news is we kept the air and things going, so a lot of the things that happens when you shut a building completely down, we're not dealing with. But we, as we mentioned, I think, is there the HVAC, and then we'll look at how we do signage and what we do. Because as this is, I would ask council to, let's do this for two years and reexamine, because this may be not the final solution for this building. And we've got to assess, and so we've got, uh, working with Barton, his team, on doing the overall building assessment, but we will name this the city hall annex or something like that, so the people will know, uh, that this is a location. Uh, we looked at a number of options to include even possibly putting over all of our, our collections functions there, but then we start thinking of having a safe and things like that that we have. So, uh, we, we're just now trying to figure out how to do it. I will tell you that when we get to a budget discussion, that's when I will talk about what things we may need to do next if we want to do more build-out. I needed a group that could move in without making too many changes.
And this is, this is accessible to the public as well?
It will be, yes, absolutely. Uh, we have an area, uh, I like the fact that when you look at the front area, and I know it's hard to see there, uh, there's a table, uh, as we talk about, uh, my neighborhood services folks, when they come meet, there is a front area where the, uh, glass is. Where there's a receptionist person who will be there to let people in. It'll also provide something that I think is very important for my human resources, is I love my buildings here, but the walls are thin, but a little bit of privacy when people come to talk to human resources. When they need to conduct training for staff and orientation, and so this will be a public building, but it is also secured. So both entrance on both sides have a security, uh, area that keep people from just wandering in, and so they can't just walk back into the area.
Is there a kitchen in that facility?
There is a, a, a staff lounge up top, uh, that is made for, uh, a kitchen area. It's a great building, I was very impressed.
Alright, thank you.
But if you'd like to go over there, I would love for council just to see it because it's a good asset to see.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item number six, staff and board reports, item 6A, received the police department quarterly report. Interim Police Chief Mark Levigny, chief.
Mayor and Council.
We are a recognized agency of the Texas Police Chiefs' Recognized Accreditation Program. And with that, our staffing and personnel, we have a picture of three of our officers at the top with me after having been sworn in several months ago. Well, now they're independently working on the streets as patrol officers. They're doing an awesome job for us. On the picture below, that officer, Esmeralda Pineda, is in the last phase of her training and she will soon be on the streets working as an independent patrol officer for us. She's doing well. Also, most recently, we've had two cadets graduate the police academy. You'll be happy to hear that both of them graduated that police academy with honors. Both of them graduated with academic honors, one of them being the valedictoring of the class. And then they were, one of them was recognized in other measurement competitions such as top physical fitness and in firearms. And the other officer, Officer Goodwin, was ranked highest, third highest in, with the GPA in the class.
Our question, chief, has Officer Peterson been evaluated for top physical fitness against Officer Freeze?
I don't think formally, but I'm not sure what they've done. You know, Sergeant Freeze is one of our use of force instructors and he's a very, he's very good at what he does. And he takes it very seriously and he can be intense, but he can have a good time.
Well, I'm sorry, since the mayor opened up for questions, would you flip back to your last slide for just a second?
The last slide?
Yes, sir. I think it's worth noting that the young lady in the center, would you tell us, I believe her grandparents is a longtime resident of Duncanville, so I was glad to note during her graduation that her parents, well, she lives in Duncanville now, but I know her grandparents live in Duncanville, but that's worth noting.
Yeah, sure. Her grandparents live in Duncanville and they've been up here and, you know, the city manager and a lot of the staff organized here recently, you know, where we could come together in several different departments, you know, kind of a softball tournament. And Officer Piku, of whom you speak, is a collegiate, a former collegiate softball player and she helped one of our PD teams prevail over every other department. By the way, I think they were coached by the assistant chief over there, but we had a good time.
And a Stogner pick, I presume, yeah.
So we also had a new hire within the department, Officer Greg Harvey, he's one of our, he's our newest animal control officer. And we didn't have time in putting this together, get a picture of him to put up there, but he was previously a city employee and we brought him away and he's, he's doing well for us, so he's excited. We currently have five openings. Now, that may sound like, hey, what happened? We took a jump there, but as of, as you know, as of October 1st, our authorized staffing went from 60 to 62, so that's included in the five. So we will have an entry level test on November, is it, November 20th? We have to apply by November 12th. And that's very easy to do, just go to Duncanville.com forward slash police and hit the Apply Now button and you'll fill out a few fields. And if you want to be part of a great police department, then do that. Apply now and come test and we'll get you through the process. So some of what's happened over the last three months, we talked about traffic stops and again, I will frame that conversation as stops. And what we're trying to do in getting people to comply with traffic law. And as you see through 2020, as one might imagine, we previously discussed, COVID hit us and we kind of had that dip. But as you can see in 21, we're starting on that uptick and we're actually leveling out, so we're, we're really doing a good job there. Some of our efforts to try to curb-
Chief, excuse me, chief, I have a question on traffic stops. I know that the governor mandated the ceasing of red light cameras.
Yes, sir.
I personally witness weekly three to four to five red light runners, almost myself being in accidents at least almost once a week by intentional red light runners. In fact, coming here tonight, witnessing a red light runner. Are any of these increases in traffic stops red light runners? Do you have any idea if that's part of this, this data?
You know, I, I would almost assuredly say that they would be. Now, what number I could apply to that, I couldn't stand here and tell you that. But we, this undoubtedly serves as numbers for every traffic violation for which we stop during these periods.
Okay, thank you.
And to your note, mayor, you know, running red lights and trying to get through a yellow light and trying to make that, that's one of the most dangerous things that we can do in an intersection. And, you know, probably if we're honest with ourselves, at some point in our lives if we've driven long enough, we've probably done it. And maybe it's been where that yellow light got on us too fast, we thought, but be a little bit more defensive, because if we T-bone somebody, the chances of somebody getting, you know, injured severely go up tremendously.
Hey, chief, since we're on that, you know, we put, the city put those red light cameras in those particular spots for a reason. So if that's the reason was because we knew people was running those lights, would you use that same reasoning to have an officer there in those stations, since we don't have a red light camera? Would you use that same rationale in putting officers there to help the-
Certainly. I think you've got to use the data that's available to you to deploy your personnel where you need your personnel, whether it's for traffic enforcement, red light, red light runners, or whether it's for, you know, just other calls that are serious calls. We need to look at that data and we, and we do. So now, with that said, we still have certain number of officers, and again, the staffing has been improved here recently. So we're constantly kind of chasing that and evaluating that and deploying people.
And, and, and thank you, I understand that. I'm just hoping that you hear us as well, and I know you, you do, but I'm like, I'm like the mayor, we see so many red light runners in obvious places, Cochrane Hill, Wheatland, so those major places that we really need to know that they are, they're there.
Sure.
Thank you.
And I know you mentioned Cochrane Hill, we've done a tremendous job of late in getting down there and trying to make an impact on people to really slow down as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
In our efforts to try and curb burglary of vehicles, we're using our citizens on patrol, along with some of our sworn personnel, to go out to different parking areas at least once a month. And we really, again, we want to talk about education and we want people to understand if you've got something valuable and sometimes just change. We've seen cars broken into for mere pennies. Don't leave it in the car, you risk getting broken into. And if you help us, because again, we cannot be everywhere at all time, so we need you to help us. And we need to get that pass rate up to at least a consistent, I mean, 100%, but let's get it up higher. We're, we're halfway at best. So if anybody wants to talk about how they can improve and help us help them, we're open to having that conversation, but just please, take your valuables, lock, hide and take, lock, hide and take.
Mr. Contreras?
Just a quick question on that last slide. Are these locations, since these seem to be some of our higher profile cases, do they have signage up reminding people not to keep possession?
We're very conscientious of making sure that the signs are up. Matter of fact, we've had conversations, for instance, at one of these establishments where you may go in and try to improve your fitness level. You know, you can put things up on, say treadmills or what have you. And we're trying to think outside the box to get people's attention. So yes, we, we're very cognizant of the signs. If we see signs need to be repaired, we're looking to, to make sure that they're updated or if paint's fading or what have you. The next slide shows our efforts, you know, to tackle catalytic converter thefts. That is a huge problem. I was at a Southwest Regional Communication Meeting today with our sister city chiefs and everybody's getting just, cars are having their catalytic converters sawed off and there, there's a lot of money into what's in these things. And the better that we can harden these targets, the better it's going to be for everybody. I don't know if this is the end-all solution and we can't get enough people in here, we've got so many citizens and so many cars and, you know, only so many people and so much time that we can get to these cars. But we've got to figure out a way to harden these targets. But we did have 70 vehicles show up and I think at least one of the council members showed up to have their catalytic converter etched as well. So we, we worked hard, several of our employees and our volunteers, and that was a great service to our citizens. So we look to do those periodically. We had our awards banquet back in August and hap, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are there particular areas where they're taking part in?
Where it's occurring? You know, they're occurring in neighborhoods, they're occurring in apartment parking lots, they're occurring in, in regular parking lots with, with businesses. This can happen so fast. It's incredible. And, you know, I don't know that we, as a law enforcement profession, have the, totally, totally the answer. We're probably going to need some help from, from manufacturers of vehicles and to help us harden these, but temporarily we're working to try to do our best.
I was just going to say, you know, that, that poor council member that had his stolen, this happened at the high school at around 11 or 12 o'clock in the afternoon.
It, it's bold.
But you're saying there's, there's no pattern as far as-
There's, there's no pattern.
Yeah.
Wherever, wherever they see a car. You know, there's some vehicles that, that, you know, the Toyotas seem to be, seem to be prevalent as far as being victimized. And there are a couple other makes, but certainly the Toyotas. So I, I'm not sure exactly why that is, but maybe there's more of the metal that's in there that's, that's more appealing to turn these things around. So our awards banquet was held in August. One of our civilian employees, Tim Jones, was civilian of the year, he does a great job for us as our evidence technician in the property room. He oversees over 20,000 articles of property currently in the evidence room and we're constantly churning that. Our volunteer of the year was Judy Burcom. She is always at the station seemingly and always looking for ways to help, so we certainly appreciate her and all our volunteers. And our officer of the year is the man of the year, Officer Doug Sisk, and he does a great job for us. We're going to have some big shoes to fill, but we're confident we'll get there and we'll do that with Officer Michelle Arias. Over to the left on the bottom, Larry Wonsley of the five-time Super Bowl champion Dallas Cowboys. He's formerly a police officer in California, he, an FBI agent, and now he's head of corporate security for the Dallas Cowboys. And what a year they're having. So we appreciate Mr. Wonsley coming out. And again, the picture down at the bottom, we had a lot of folks show up and had a good time. Thank you for the support, the, of those, of you who showed up. We appreciate it. So our department activity, our use of force incidents, we had three, all were deemed to be within lawful and within department policy. We had no vehicle pursuits and we have one complaint, it's still under investigation and disposition is pending. Isn't that a great picture? There've been some awesome updates to the fieldhouse and that picture was taken several months ago to commemorate one of our DPS troopers that we lost.
The number of use of force incidents, could you talk a little bit more about that? I'm not sure exactly.
So, yes, sir. So any use of force, which is basically any decentralization of someone that we're trying to take into custody. And decentralization, that's a fancy word for if we took somebody from a standing position to on the ground. And it could have been just, just that in a very controlled technique, it could have been a tackle. But anytime we, we use force, we have to report it and we review it all the way up the chain. And we not only review it for use of force, but we're, we're reviewing it for any policy violation. Obviously it is a use of force incident, but we want to make sure that, to the best of our ability, that we're reviewing all of those and we're making sure that we're, we're, our personnel are doing what they should do. And if, if they're not, we're correcting it.
No, I just, that's what I thought, I just wanted to point out that as long as I've known, from what I've known, that we've never had a serious incident where there was unlawful use of force.
Well, and, you know, from time to time, we'll have something and it's not a major serious incident, fortunately. We're human beings, but I think the measure of our department, the measure of the men and women of our department is if we make a mistake, how do we make that right? And how do we not make that same mistake again? So thank you for recognizing that.
But the Duncanville Police Department has a very good reputation though, in that, as far as I can tell in that regard, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, city manager, I know we definitely don't want this building to be taken or stolen from us, but I'm looking at something to make sure that's correct. That new emblem, is that a new emblem on the building? Did I miss that?
Oh, that's a little bit of something I think we did on the power. You want to write a pretty symbol?
Yes.
And did you get that symbol on there?
We just added that on the PowerPoint.
Okay, sure looked pretty being on there. Thank you.
I was just going to talk about the patch, we had the old one on there, I put the new one on there. So some of our community engagement efforts, and again, we're looking back at the previous three months. So July, you know, we had a great July 4th event, one July 3rd, but a lot of participants, we were getting back in the swing of things and we just had a great event, notice some of the pictures. The 9/11 event, 20 years later, our honor guard participated in that and they did an awesome job. And, you know, Councilman Cooks, your meet and greet here recently, we participated in along with other departments and that's the lower right-hand picture there, so-
That's actually with three districts, it wasn't just a meet and connect, it was the councilman-
It was several. I think, I think you kind of do the meet and greet and I think several kind of tagged on to that, so we certainly appreciate that. Thank you for pointing that out. So again, this is just a reminder of our NIBR's Group A offenses, those are the things that are included in Group A offenses. And there's a laundry list of everything and it's more, it's more definitive than what we used to do with UCR, Uniform Crime Reporting. So from July to September 2021, these are what occurred, what may have been unfounded, what actually took place as far as actual offenses and those that we were able to clear. So, and understand when you look at stats, at any one day when you take that snapshot, because we're constantly churning these cases and investigating them, we could have clearances changed, so there might be slight differences if you took a snapshot one day versus another. And just always remember that when you look at numbers like this. So NIBR's Group A offense count comparison with our sister cities. And understanding here that we are the only one showing September because we know what our numbers were in September. We get this from the portal, the crime report, report portal at DPS. And the other agencies, maybe they just haven't come in and reported that via the portal, but we know what ours are, so that's why ours is listed. So our numbers, as one might imagine, are less typically than what you're seeing in our sister cities because, you know, we're, we're, our population and our square miles are a little bit less.
Yeah, true.
Going through each month, these are, this is a depiction of our map and then an illustration of, you know, some of the major crimes that we used to look at it in, with uniform crime reporting. So I'll give you an opportunity to look at each one as we go forward. It's August. And some of the theft things you see, that's the catalytic converters, we've looked into that, it's going to be theft otherwise.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, sir.
Good conclusion. Thank you. And as always, we appreciate our police force and all that they do and at all times, and even with our fire department and our firefighters, our first responders get all of our respect and our prayers and our thoughts for every day that you- And as always, we appreciate our police force and all that they do, and at all times, and even with our fire department and our firefighters, our first responders, get all of our respect, and our prayers and our thoughts for every day that you all are out there in harm's way, and keeping our citizens safe. We do appreciate it, thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, Chief, thank you very much for putting that last slide, uh, and I requested that a few years ago, and you consistently showing that slide, we're showing the district, so thank you very much. And then the new added slide with the, uh, sister cities, so thank you for adding those slides.
Certainly appreciate it.
Okay, Chief Roddy, as far as yours, sir.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and our city manager. Want to thank y'all for allowing the fire department to come down and brag on itself a little bit. I'd like to start off with, uh, talking about, uh, our new staff, a member that we had, uh, joined us a couple weeks ago. Uh, introducing him as, uh, his name is Armando Martinez, he's a firefighter EMT. He is currently, um, going through our orientation and our training process, so that he knows how to do it, uh, the Duncanville Fire Department way. We will make sure he understands what he's doing and the way we operate. Uh, in the future, he gets to go to, uh, paramedic school, so we wish him all the world of success on trying to get through that six-month, uh, school, and of, uh, paramedic school. Currently, we have one vacancy that, uh, we're in the process of, uh, working with, uh, HR, uh, to do, to develop us a, uh, civil service entrance exam, so that we can go ahead and start working the list, and try to replace that, uh, one vacancy we have off that, uh, current list. Uh, I currently have one guy in, uh, paramedic school, uh, he's attending, uh, Brookhaven College. And then I have a, uh, we were fortunate enough to get a, another firefighter who is a nurse, and he's going through a hybrid program at, uh, uh, Central College to be able to transfer over, to be able to do, uh, he, get his paramedic certification. Back in, uh, September the eleventh, which is a sacred day to us, we decided we were gonna have our, uh, fire banquet. And I'd like to introduce those who weren't able to attend, uh, some of our recipients of the awards that night. Uh, our firefighter of the year, uh, very happy, uh, young man, his name is Clint Thomas. And then we have our paramedic of the year, uh, Tom Campbell, and then we have our officer of the year, uh, who's a captain, uh, Adam Langdon. We also, uh, present a physical fitness award, that's one of our biggest goals in the fire department, is to make sure every one of our people, uh, are very physically fit. Uh, and this young man here is very, uh, much of a mentor to the rest of the group, to get him inspired, come out and, uh, and prevent, uh, do the physical fitness. So, we really appreciate his efforts in, in kind of leading the cause of keeping our, uh, department in good shape. And everybody's aware of Mike Ryan, he's our, uh, EMS division chief. He, uh, is recipient of our most valuable player award this year, and some of the th- the, um, activities that, uh, Mike does for us, he, uh, will teach, uh, first aid, and he teaches CPR to a lot of our, um, city employees, which there's an expense to that, um, program that he gives out for those things. And he's saving our, uh, city budget by going in there and teaching these classes, so he's a valuable asset. He also goes out and he teaches, um, in, uh, different types of organizations, which they, uh, they appreciate, you know, Mike being involved in the community. He's also involved with, uh, social work in the city. Uh, he goes out with our next recipient of our community service award is Katie Afribok. She, uh, is our social worker, she's a fo- associated with, uh, Parkland and Bytail, and, uh, uh, Chief Ryan will work closely with her to go out into our, uh, into our community, and see if there's anyone that's in their need of, uh, some help, and ma- and provide them with social work and guidance and direction. Also, we have Lacy Freeman, she's my, uh, and I hate to say, she's my woman of the year. Uh, I could not do it without Lacy Freeman, so, uh, she really works hard, uh, to make sure the fire department i- is efficient and effective, and, uh, she works diligently with, uh, Chief Chase and myself to make sure that we're, uh, doing things properly. And I have to, I have to pat her on the back for doing such a good job. She's, uh, our other recipient of our most valuable player award.
And Chief, uh, she also is married to a firefighter, is that correct?
Pardon me?
She's also married to a firefighter?
Uh, yes, sir, he, uh, works over in DeSoda, he's their appointed, uh, fire marshal, and he just went through school and over that, so-
So, she lives it during the day and when she goes home?
Oh, yeah, yes, she does.
Hey, Chief, let me take the opportunity then to echo your comments to her. I know you worked, were with her from day to, from, from day to day. However, I had the opportunity to meet her during the budget time, and I know you were out of town during that time. Excellent presentation for the budget, uh, matter of fact, I'm like, you can come present the budget piece all the time, leave, leave Chief, uh, where he was, but great job. She's an excellent, uh, excellent young lady who delivered that budget for us.
Thank you very much, and she's a treasure to the fire department, I just, I cannot express how much she, uh, is a valuable player in, in the city, um, workings. Cause she, uh, she, uh, really helps out with, um, HR, and she really helps out, you know, uh, with, uh, computer issues and everything, she sho- she understands it very well.
And Chief, you also mentioned on, on the same slide, Mike Ryan, uh, does some teaching. Uh, you and Mike, uh, used to go down to that, uh, firefighters academy down in, uh, College Station and teach, didn't you?
That's correct.
Are you still doing that?
Mike, Mike Ryan and myself. Uh, I retired from there, uh, last year, so I'm not going back, and Mike hasn't been down there in a couple years either, but we still, uh, we're instructors down there for a number of years.
Yeah, that's a pretty well-respected, uh, facility they have down there for firefighting training.
Yes, internationally, internationally it's respected, yes, sir. Want to introduce to y'all my newest, uh, fire apparatus, okay? It's something that, uh, I'm extremely proud of. Uh, we all had a s- small part, but a major part, and make sure this thing was designed, uh, to operate in Duncanville. And, uh, there was four of us that designed this apparatus, and, uh, I look at that and I say, man, she's a real beauty. She's something that, uh, the city of Duncanville can be proud of, and, you know, we're gonna use that in our, uh, parades and all that kind of stuff, and show it off, uh, what the, uh, the taxpayers have, have purchased. Uh, this, uh, this unit here, uh, we were hoping to get it into service as quickly as possible, but, um, we've had some delays. Uh, and being that, uh, when we order the equipment, you know, there's a lot of supply delays now, but same thing with this fire equipment, there's, uh, there's been some delays. So, we're still waiting on some equipment to come in there and make sure that we can put that in service. We, we're hoping to bring it up here tonight and show it off to you guys, but it wouldn't quite have the pieces, I didn't think y'all wanna look into a hole on the side of the, uh, engine. So, uh, we're gonna hold off to another one of our council meetings that y'all can gander at y'all's new, uh, fire apparatus.
Uh, Chief, does this fit in, uh, fire station one or two?
It fits in fire station one.
It is going in one?
Yeah, barely, until we get the new one built.
Yeah.
Also, our department, we're big on professional development. We try to send, uh, people to get as much education as possible. So, we, uh, were fortunate enough to send, uh, our battalion chief, Rob Hancock, and our engineer, Stephen Hatley, to the fire, uh, department instructors conference, which is one of the biggest, uh, conferences in, in the nation. Uh, has all types of, uh, lessons that they give up there, they have technology, and they have equipment that our, our people can go up there and see if we're operating in what the most efficient and most effective way. Also, our, um, emergency management, uh, operations coordinator, she, uh, has been doing training, uh, for damage assessment. Uh, she got some guides, and she's been teaching, uh, Duncanville, DeSoda, Lancaster, and Cedar Hill how to use these, um, these, uh, assessment training guides. So, if we have some type of major event here that causes a lot of destruction, that, uh, we can have our, such as our cert teams, a lot of our executive team members can go out into the field and do a damage assessment. And what that benefits us too is that, uh, it helps us with, uh, FEMA reimbursement. Uh, the closer they get on that estimate, the better the chance of, uh, us being reimbursed through, uh, FEMA. We also received Lauren Sanchez put in for, um, to provide us with, uh, binax COVID nineteen, uh, rapid, uh, testing kits for the cities of Cedar Hill, uh, DeSoda, Duncanville, and Lancaster. And so now we're using those kits, we're going in there and, um, we've, uh, received, our people have received training on how to administer these binax COVID nineteen rapid tests, and the fire department is currently offering to all of our, uh, employees, uh, testing down at the fire station, and also their, uh, immediate family members.
Uh, Chief, do you happen to know what the result time is on these rapid tests from testing to results?
Yeah, fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We also, uh, got a chance to send, um, Lauren Sanchez to attend the National Homeland Security Conference in Vegas. And, uh, these are the kind of, uh, conferences that I like, and it's ones that the COG pays for. So, we were able to send her out there, and they completely paid for all of her expenses, so, uh, the fire department's gonna take advantage of any kind of free training that we can, we can receive. And then also, um, our emergency management plan is constantly, uh, monitored, and every five years, the, uh, annexes are up for review. So, that's, um, um, Lauren's job is to make sure that they're all up to date with, uh, phone numbers, addresses, uh, things such as that, so we can operate in case we have a, uh, emergency here in the city. During this quarter, we had a, uh, total calls for service of two thousand and fifty. Uh, ones that the highlight in there is, uh, the one thou- the EMS calls for service, the one thousand five hundred and thirty-seven. And also, uh, we had inspections that we completed, and those inspections are your initial building inspection, your CO inspections, and then the re-inspections that occur with either one of those, is if we have to go back and, and verify that it's been corrected. I also might brag on, we had, uh, building fires, sixteen building fires, and, uh, we went to, responded to a structure fire down in Cedar Hill, and our apparatuses, uh, were the first ones to show up in Cedar Hill. And when we did, the, uh, the structure was, uh, burning, had flames exiting the structure, but it was mostly in the room of origin. So, our crews went in immediately, knocked the, uh, fire down, and they were, uh, in the process of removing the smoke when they, uh, come across a, um, person that was in the house. So, they, uh, quickly, uh, did a primary search and moved that, um, victim to the outside where we could get them treatment. Um, they had a bad smoke inhalation and some burns, but still we were able to, uh, get them out, and they were, at the time that we took them out, they were still, um, you know, alive. So, that's a big plus for the fire department, getting there fast and, and, uh, doing a rescue. So, our total calls for the year, if you know us, uh, for fiscal year twenty-one, we had seven thousand three hundred and eighty-eight, which those numbers, other than the COVID year, just continued to increase for the fire department, just because of our population and, uh, our surrounding areas. And of note is the forty-eight structure fires, and then we had five thousand four hundred and thirty-five, uh, calls for service for, uh, EMS. And then we completed six hundred and seventy-one, uh, inspections here, uh, in the city of Duncanville. So, with that being said-
Well, Chief, on that last slide, um, yeah, and I think you answered my question right at the end, these numbers are all called in the city of Duncanville?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions for Chief Roddy? Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all for seeing the report.
Thanks to your entire department and all of our staff and firefighters, thank you. Item six C, received a monthly financial report as of August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Ms. Atmore?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and council members and city managers. I'm here to present to you the, uh, financial report, monthly financial report for the month of August. We are counting down, we're in the eleventh month of the year, so, uh, we're almost getting there to the end of the year. So, what I want, and this report will show you the overall general fund, I'll go over all the funds and, um, and some in more detail than others, but to ta- give you an overall picture of the city's finances, they are in good shape. Uh, what you do see up here is the general fund, at this time of the year, we should be ninety-two percent of our revenue should have been received in, as that's our target when we look at where we are at the, um, near this part of the year. And so, if you look at the financials for, uh, August, you'll see that we have thirty-one point two million has been brought in out of a revised budget of thirty-three, and that brings us to ninety-two point six of the revenues that we've collected, uh, for the year. Uh, so, we're right on target with the revenues for the general fund, and if you look down at the expenditures, uh, for general fund, uh, you'll all also see that we're at, uh, twenty-seven million, uh, which puts us at eighty point five percent of the expenditures that we spent in accordance with the budget. Uh, so, staff is doing a good job in keeping on, on track, uh, with keeping expenditures, um, near what they should be during the year. And so, we still have another month to go, uh, and I do want to bear in mind, when you look at the revenues, um, just for a second, when you look at property taxes, you know, we've got a little over, just a little slit, slip it over the hundred percent, but sales tax, uh, just remember that it's at seventy-eight percent, and we are two months behind. And so, October this month and November, we'll receive two months, and that will be applied back to fiscal year, uh, twenty-one. So, it'll be applied back to the September report, okay? And so, you'll see, uh, that we are doing, we have a day's coverage of about two hundred and one, when we look at the actual expenditures and revenues. So, like I said, general fund is doing pretty well. If you also look at to the right side, where we look at prior year numbers, uh, we'll see that we're right in the ballpark of the revenues and the expenditures for the general fund. Uh, this is just a chart showing you what the actuals, and this just gives you a picture of property tax is fifty-eight percent of our total revenues for general fund. And that's, and that's followed by, you know, your sales and other taxes, which is made up of your, your beverage tax and your sales tax, um, and those other taxes that come in, as well as the transfers from other funds. So, those make up the three top, uh, tiers of your revenues for the general fund. And this is a, uh, just a chart showing you the percentage of the budget as of August, and if, those of you who like the pictures and the graphs, it can, instead of looking at the numbers, this gives you an overall picture of where we are against, uh, where the budget is for the year. And like I said, we're at ninety-two point six percent of the revenues we've taken in, and we're just one more month to go, and I, we will not have a problem, um, making our budget for fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, so, when you look at the, uh, this is a chart of the expenditures, the general fund expenditures for August. Um, sixty-three point three percent makes up salaries and benefits, um, that takes a hu- huge chunk of the revenues, of course. And of course, followed that is like contracts and services, that'll services, uh, like can be professional services, maintenance services, any types of contracts that we, for services and goods that we get in. So, those three, along with, um, our transfers to other funds, helps, uh, yes, transfers to other funds helps make us the three top expenditures of the general fund.
Is that, uh, broke out somewhere, that contracted professional services, is it broke out somewhere to tell us who's, where that, uh, expenditure's coming from, who's getting that, uh, those funds?
Uh, yes, uh, in a more detailed report, uh, I can give you that, but in your reports, that's not broken out, uh, specifically by, um, optic code. But if you need that, I'd be happy to give that to you.
No, at some point I'll, I'll ask for it, I'm just wondering if you had.
Yes, that's just a category we, cause there are a lot of other optic codes that, that fall into that, but yes, that's just another report that we can give you that has the details.
Right, thank you.
And if you look at the general fund expenditures for the month of August, uh, again, we can see the actual versus the budget, and this just gives you a picture of where we at. We eighty-five, eighty point five percent of the, the expenditures we spent already this year. Um, and so, staff is, like, as I said before, they're doing their job in keeping, um, it within their budget. This next fund is the utility operating fund, um, and if you look at the revenues, uh, for this fund on the actual side, you know, we've taken in twelve point seven million, and so they're at seventy point two percent of the revenues as opposed, uh, compared to the budget, uh, for August. Uh, and then you go down and look at the expenditures, um, we've spent fifteen million, a little over fifteen million, um, as of August. So, you can see the revenues over expenditures is two point nine million, which is almost three million. Uh, so, right now, you can see- 3 million. So right now, you can see this fund has a track of spending more than it's bringing in. And I think that we've made this, pointed this out to you in during the budget process, is that we, if we continue to do this on our utility fund, we're, at some point down the road, we're going to have to look at this and decide how we're going to address it. Because when you look at fiscal year 20, and I'll show you the prior year to the right side of the chart, you will also see we did basically the same thing in fiscal year 20, is so that we had 2.2 million more than we actually brought into the fund. So this is a trend in the utility fund, even though when we look at the fund balance, the fund balance does have a healthy fund balance. It's got roughly 305 days of expenditures in the balance. But we are drawing down on the fund balance consistently from year to year. This is the utility CIP fund. And this is the fund where most of the money from, I don't say most of the money, but about 5 million of the utility operating funds come from that fund into this fund in order to do water, wastewater, utility projects, water and sewer lines. And so you can see on the actuals for 21, we've taken most of the transfers in, but we also have some expenditures for projects that we've held during this time. If you look at the revised budget, we had planned to spend a little bit more than we actually have at this point in time. We kind of, kind of slowed that because we didn't want to pull this fund into a hole, because this is mostly funded by operating funds from the utility operating fund. But overall, the fund is doing okay. We're keeping on top of it and making sure that, you know, if we look like we're going to get in some issues, we pretty much take care of it. The next fund is the economic development fund. And this fund has, the revenues over expenditures about over almost $600,000. So this fund balance has a pretty healthy fund balance, about 4.2 million as of August. And you can see what the budget, what is budgeted to have. So the economic development fund is doing pretty good. I did place a note on this fund. If you look down in the right corner, bottom right corner, is that there's debt service for this fund of roughly around 2 million that matures in February of 2025. And so that's debt that was actually issued by economic development. And most of this debt was issued for the building that has the fieldhouse at this point. The next fund is the hotel fund.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Just go ahead one second. I just have to ask this question. So on, and this is probably for more so for every department. Do we charge, and I know it's just a crossover of funding, but are we charging for, let's say, space? I know the city manager just talked about moving services to different locations. Do we allocate expenses to charging them for their space that they're using within the organization, within the building itself? Is that...
No, we do not.
We do not?
We do not. It's, you know, what we pay for the building, and I'm not sure, I think we probably own that building, but we don't charge...
Not even just that building. I use that as an example of any building.
No, they're considered part of city space. We don't, we don't do that. There are, I do know there are some cities that do charge their EDC rent for space. I know DeSoto was doing that. They charge them rent for the facility, for their part that they're using that building. But here, no, we do not do that.
Okay. And you don't see a need to have them do that, right?
I can't make that decision. That'd be something that we'll left up to management or to look at down the road. But at this point right now, no, we are not.
All right, thank you.
The hotel fund, as you look in that, that has over 2.8 million in fund balance at this time. But it's doing well. This fund is taking in from the hotel tax fund, the hotel occupancy tax fund. And so it's also used for some other things that is managed, spearheaded by EDC. So this fund is doing well. And then there's the fieldhouse fund. Again, as I talked to you about this fund last month, the negative fund balance is drawing down. You can see that they have more revenues than they have expenditures in actuals for this year in August. So that is a good thing. And we hope to continue that trend. But we still have a negative 1.1 million in the hole for the fund balance for fieldhouse. The next part is on your special revenue funds. And I do this as an overall, this gives you the beginning balance, the revenues and expenditures, and the ending balance for your other special revenue funds. And these, that includes your self-insurance fund, your grants and donation fund. You have the police forfeiture funds that are part of the special revenue fund. So as you take a look at those, all of those at this point have a good amount of fund balance, except basically the emergency relief fund. That's Fund 757. I think we started out, there's really no budget really for that going on right now. So whatever monies we put into that, we spend out of that, is going to cover any monies that we did spend. But right now, there's just a small deficit balance. Yes, sir.
Going back to Slide 87, please. For the TIF, the Actual Increment Financing at the balance of 353?
Yes, sir.
Has the TIF board given any consideration to repaying the EDC the $150,000 that was seed money?
We have not had that conversation. And that'd be something that I'll have to talk with the economic development director regarding that.
The city manager might want to make that an item for the TIF board.
Absolutely.
Thank you. The next set of funds is your debt and your capital project funds. And I kind of put those on one slide. You had a debt service fund, which pays all your debt. That's considered general government debt. That's not self-supported by any other funds. And so this is the fund that makes up, right now you have a $1.3 million fund balance. And this is all funded by property taxes, the debt service part of your property tax fund that goes into this part. And this, this includes your fleet replacement funds, your street funds for construction of streets, other capital projects funds. I believe Fund... I don't see it down here. There is a, there is a fund, Capital Projects Funds, that's 20 million, Fund 26. I think that's where the money is for the fire station. And that's where a lot of the bond money went. So you can see how much that has left in that fund right now.
Where is it? I'm sorry.
Fund 26.
Fund 26, okay.
Yeah, it has a ending balance of 19.9 million. And that's where the bond money for the 2019 bond issuance, most of that money went into this fund. And the last set of fund would be your other enterprise funds. What we, I would classify as enterprise funds would be your sanitation and your drainage fund. And these funds still have a, still do have a healthy fund balance. And it's doing well at this point. Any questions?
Mr. Contreras?
Could you go back to 81, I believe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that one, you pointed out in the 2021 actuals, the $15 million. And you also referred to the, looking back at the 2020, $17 million. And you mentioned when you said that, that that's something that you'll be talking about in the future. So I trust that's a conversation. You want to go ahead and answer?
You can respond.
Yeah, when we have, looking at the water utility fund, we need to look at what rates are going on and what we charge. I don't think this fund has had any rate increase in years. And so when we look at the rate and what we are paying for water and for sewer treatment services through other entities, it's increasing every year. Okay? So as that increases every year exponentially, and your water rates are not covering those fees, then you have, you're dipping into your fund balance. And that could be a threat to this fund at some point.
And I seem to remember that during budget, we kind of recognized that we hadn't increased our water rates in a while. So that is a conversation nobody wants to have, but it's going to be time coming up soon, I imagine.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're looking at prior reports. I have prior reports where water rate studies were performed. And what we want to do is go back and revisit those and also talk to consultants that put those together and see if we can have, go and look at it, look at it now, where we are now, and come back to you with what it would take, what we need to do, and back to council to see, to help make a decision.
What is the most recent report that we have? What year?
Ma'am?
What year was the water rate study?
The last one you were looking at.
The last one I was looking at, I believe it was two years ago, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah. And I think even with that one, we did not follow the plan. We did not follow what was suggested. So, and I think that's the history, is that we've been presented the plan, but we haven't actually followed the plan, what is presented to us.
Can I respond, ma'am? So what we do, what the water rate study is, they don't just say a rate for one year. They give you a multi-phase process of what you should do over time. And a lot of cities will say, we'll, we'll address it at the time and see what's happening. And so we actually know what we should be charging. And we know what we should have been. But a decision sometimes happens that, well, we're going to wait to see where we are. And so what we would be doing is validating their recommendation for where we should be right now to make sure that it's still in line. And so we do plan to bring that back, to include that in our next budget, if council would like to. But we'd like to at least give a realistic number.
Yeah, because I do believe that part of that report is very honest when they're talking to us about where it's, where we're headed if we don't talk about increases.
Yes, sir.
Or implement increases.
That was, that was in the report of where we headed. But we didn't choose to take the advice.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor. The basic idea underlying an enterprise fund is that an enterprise fund is structured such that all costs of operating and maintaining the fund are recovered through the rate fees. And so given the fact that the primary cost drivers of the water and sewer fund, or sewage treatment, Trinity River Authority, water purchases, Dallas Water Utilities, and also infrastructure operations, and maintenance, and replacement. Dallas and Trinity River Authority constantly, annually, look at their expenditures. And their operations are designed every year to recover their cost of operations in terms of water and sewage treatment. So from time to time, we do not change our rates to match their rates. And in essence, over time, that creates a structural imbalance. And so at some point, we have to do a rate study and correct for that so that we can operate our water and sewer fund in the spirit of what an enterprise fund is designed to do.
Yes, sir.
And the fact that water is a business for the city. And I don't think a lot of our residents understand that. We buy and sell water.
Exactly.
And any business itself has margin.
Yes, sir.
And those margins are incorporated in terms of what we have administrative overhead in terms of administering water itself.
Yes, sir.
It's one of the most complained about, one of the least understood charges that we have. In terms of it being understood, is that if we could be our own utility, well our own water, sell our own water, it'd be a different story. But as Mr. Harvey well explained, we buy our water from Dallas Water Utilities, and we have to pay for that water in terms of the issue that city manager and finance director have to go through is, what are those margins? And, you know, if you put that in strict retail terms, what's the markup?
Yes.
You know, we can't sell it at cost because there are, there is overhead costs that are incurred as a result of running that particular business. And at some point, as Mr. Harvey well explained, we are in deficit mode. And it's going to be a hard call for city manager and finance director when it comes to us as a council, to make that call and to well explain it and educate our residents as to the aspects of this as a business. How much longer can we, as a city, continue to absorb cost increases without passing it on? Because it does impact the overall fund balances and the financial sustainability and stability of who we are and what we are. So if it ever comes down to external financial reviews and audits, those kinds of things can be material findings.
Yeah, these type of things.
We do not want a material finding when it comes time to do audit our financials. And some external auditing firms may come up with that and saying that you cannot continue to run this city in a deficit mode, even though that's a very small portion of our overall financial outlook. It is a portion that an auditor will look at with great scrutiny, I would say. So at some point, council, we're going to have to face this. And do you know when the next, city manager, do you know when the next contract is for the council to examine the water rates, is, by any chance?
What we're going to do is we're going to bring this back to you toward, we're going to talk about it a little bit toward the end of the year, but we're going to start having the discussion in January to talk about it.
January, okay. All right, thank you. Anything else for Ms. Atmore?
And I would just like to inject one thing. I want you guys to know that the utility billing department did promote Ms. Cassandra Wright to the utility billing manager. So if you guys know her, just congratulate her for her promotion, for a job well done in carrying out the conversion. No conversion is ever easy, and you can never make anybody happy. But she took on something despite all the turnover and staffing and people, and came in the middle of it and turned it around and made it happen. So if you see her, congratulate her on her new promotion. Thank you.
Well, you know, she sits behind the glass. She gets, physically, she's in a place we don't see her.
Yes. She's oftentimes...
Maybe, you know, to give us the, give her the proper recognition of the job well done. City manager might want to bring her forward and let us give her a good pat on the back. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adina. Appreciate that. All right, council and citizens that still remain, at this point, we're going to recess city council and go into executive session. That executive session, in terms of doing the proper thing, I have to read these before we go. Item number one, city council should convene and to close executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of Texas Government Code to seek legal advice from city attorney regarding EMS agreement between the city of Dallas and city of Duncanville. Item number two, city council should convene and to close executive session pursuant to Section 551.074, personnel matters of the Texas Government Code to discuss the appointment and process of a public officer or employee to wit police chief. We are recessing city council at 9:53, and we will reconvene city council in the briefing room and adjourn city council from the briefing room for information purposes. Thank you.